We're moving around together.
I'm going to put you down.
Second, any discussion? There one, there is a bigger.
I am the mayor.
There are mostly good news. There's three six special leader in there.
Yeah.
And four, public remarks. Please talk to the like. Get your name and address. Call the line over here, you left. Got him? Also, if anyone who's students out there, anyone who's speaking for the first time, if your speech is going to go over three minutes, or hit the gavel, ask somebody standing by who doesn't want to speak. A third three minutes view, they have to step up to the audience. My name is John Smith. I have three minutes to not wait to continue your speech. We're missing doing that last meeting. They began your speech. Everything of my world, be even. As I stated two weeks ago, we're only in the address that now should compare to the players. I thank all of you again for your service. Realize that other decisions are never. First, I would like to clarify that when Ryan Huppersman paid by the board, we're referring to the Board of Education, the Board of Education here. And yes, the word finance was recommended through face-to-face education budget by 8.3%. But this will not even be how it raised benefits. So submitting things with non-competitive as an activity is not the simple work to protect the back. It's the hours. I know that you've heard two hours of public speech, though, and will hear many more. I just hope that you will. And there is a difference between hearing and listening. Hearing is the passive physical process of receiving sound and listening to actively indicating. So I hope you're listening, all the times we go teachers and staff, he spoke in favor of sending a word of education budget back to the board. I hope you're listening, you have raised support of both hearts. So that you can understand how important it is to them to connect with staff. How small a task it allows to be connected. How critical it is to thank all the staff who is so important, socially, mentally. I hope you're listening, where many people emphasize that you put your negative thousand dollars right to post budget, will not incorporate all contractings, your support, and paying the distance. As was recommended in the guidelines in their budget. The original Board of Education budget housing side of it, it ran its history. Please consider these places discussing the budget. We all work what is best where schools can do that. But besides, I can't interest. Listen to the voters, open to all options and work for each other. Let the voters and students know that we are listening, that our voices be mattered. I will read you the list quote by Ross Bell. One voice is tiny and a woman cannot be heard publicly. People's voice, and it cries as monkey, said, great, good. I said, listen to us. Send the budget back.
Desire and. That's not a promise to make their needs access. That make our family the best place to do. Is like cutting this. Or playing against the goal that happens at that. The same academic progress and then it's standing in the spotlight. It's a discount, they're just taking it as well. They're going to be in the beginning, let's. Because, um, I know this is. That's somewhere, I know you've always had. Well, and always I had them in the speech. And I had a wonder athlete host on your three days. Side with the sisters and except there. So again, sir, first. Thank very much.
I guess we need some. Say no, I don't think there's any prayers. We recognize that the reason we don't have patience isn't present. But I don't. We are meeting. We want to explore the values of anyone who has seen. We value our students' culture, not just our fashion. Say not to use some feelings. You are assisting people. You wanted. So those reasons in many words, the question is. We are in the better part of the world, as soon. We know how to speak. When this place gather, like this, I'm subscription. We are looking to stay there, but we're only. Passionate, very proud of comments, who are most tired, so that's. You may still listen to this, I. But we know that. It only takes two years. We know that has this right in the management. So sweet. So yeah. You have to try to keep the guys. So yeah. Perfect. So I've been trying to find which of which nation. Whatever you think, tell me what this. We know your audience, you know. Many parties are eliminated, and there is this. Now, if you. This is not a shit character. He's kept the leadership. Enjoying some of the time.
Budget has to go back. Education is making these Americans. Why Americans beat the state? Job. Factors. Like the best thing from this case. Who's putting in streets of today? Now, we spent about ninety-two thousand dollars for students. Sure, so why do you think maybe that's what I'm doing? Benedict has a state race, simply in good student study. Do you recommend Jersey for long term? See all the others. For those with that spending, we are looking to spend the country. Turned up to quality of education. Ahead of you, ahead of you, ahead of the way, and ahead of us. So we're getting the best we can in this place. Spending fifth, achieving second, we have to choose ahead. Their exit cost for people thousand dollars. And then you say. Again, they could. It's global, it's here. Benedict averages over twenty-two thousand dollars. Students for private. Each day, we saw it better than rated as average for the state. But they don't like the spending. Persons willing to adopt such huge courses of education budget, but are screwed for the bottom third of the state. They fully funded and voted for. What is these kids in terms of? What would these kids be able to offer at retired and present? Where's our tax base? Dollar journal and a land that sort of make up the lost revenue? That nineteen thousand dollars investment is everybody. It costs each of us less than five percent of our actual. Well educated, well cared for. More of our money base is world-based. The Connecticut Reds forty-nine million. And we spend over two hundred thousand dollars for wild. For these great. Far above the next. But we're not here demanding better from them. No, we're here to punish teachers who say. Two years ago, we were calling teachers super hearing. Because we didn't know how to teach our own kids to handle. And now we want to fire teachers because we have the collective short-term memory of a dead school. President Smith and the staff and faculty that teach these guys showed that we're in a concentrated violence, job loss, funding distractions, and the backward ideology of broken. Better than this body, better than food and finance, better than food and education have ever served.
Thank you for your love. Staying here in front of you again as a concerned parent. That's me, girls, my daughter, she worked with father in this. Questions and. I came down to this, to clear this, and this. Where's that causing to be writing? I had this here, but that's okay. I can't see much better. This credit goes to many of the phenomenal teachers some here in this city. I got her up to be wealthy. We do our respect for moving. For a moment, I second guessed what it just means because it makes me the hall to hear it and Alice created in her letter. But then I realized that this letter was designed with the gift and hospital parents. Allison. Paul Smith and the Board of Ed created a minimalistic budget off the guidelines created by this board. The Board of Finance had this budget by almost two thousand dollars. And Paul Smith did his job and he sent the. This is the success. He was asked to do the impossible, and it was not my choice. And then your board just hears our presence and did not address our concerns. I'm upset, my children are upset. Their teachers are upset, my friends are upset. But this cowardly act was not fulfilled by Paul Smith. Cowardly act. Was by numbers of word of finance. And they asked my teachers to do their job and then implied that they should do more by. Left by cutting the budget. And then they would say, and I told you another. Where did they dismiss our concerns? This is beyond disappointing that we are still having this season. Please be honest. Listen to us. Think in your minds. Send the budget back. The lessons too. This is what. Hello, lavender sixteen nineteen six. Senior. You can hear in the lobby, three hours, looking at your eyes, does anything? That's right, care. Here, everything's. Your heart. How can you be just saying it? Last. Since. As I know you know. It's. To die. I saw the other. Where's he? During that day. My teachers. If you have this. My teachers have done my appearance. Now that we see them, they can make us. I can hear them also. When you like. You do. People are seeing. This is. As I said. For this was. I thought. Who is? I can. Some. Your severe past years. Oh, very sad. In my. So I can't see. Both sides. People that have this. Here again. It indicates into the eye as a seventeen. Know that. As much as I feel. Another idea is. What's the first years and different reasons? And here's the. The thing. Is. I love this. I love this stuff. The. Is. It's. It's sad. It's. Spiritized. We need to understand that our schools cannot be. Without. Without. Without having. Education seems amazing. So. Therefore, as an outsider, might not have the gears. So this is. But we're giving every student. And there is devices. The wide, the widening gap, you see. As we only. Getting there. Such as education inclusion. This is very important. But just about every, and this education inclusion is just that. But just about every private agency. Just about every door, a room. But no longer. Is that the point of the building? But anybody who. Very good. So if they're going to add nice things, they pass. They're bigger. The burden needs to come. We're facing with a psychiatrist, there are this. Discuss when you might have social misuse. Take mandates for everything with resources, mission, learning, and this list. It's full safety. Attaching to mandatory body. On any issues. Does this matter? That affects students' safety, social security, and our grace, we are as many courses. Take standard. And the goal of that, other students. To save courses and goods at this. The word emotion means. To us, to them, and others. That I could have. So we wonder is a lot. We might get really. In this. From the young age of easily. Actually, once. These teachers. They are new, it's so bad. And we find it's not take attention away. So good. I ask you as you. As you really accept this. Jesus. Do not ask. If it's.
You need to send a message. That doesn't get the schools off the hook. The fund mandates, it's empty. If tough decisions mean in your minds cutting teachers, sports, or extra curriculums, then say so.
Voters tell you what they think about those choices. The same way they might react to cutting a patrol officer or senior center position. You have to be clear about where you think the exact parts of the budget are. Our schools are an extraordinary investment. Maintaining them, improving them to keep up with the times is vital. Children only get one shot to get the best education we can offer. My children benefited from the support of others who had a vision for the town's future. I'm, I'm. Give you another twenty seconds, please. I'm hoping that in thirty years, someone can say that we had that vision too. Send this budget back to the Board of Finance to reconsider its vision.
Uh, Enja Berry, twenty-five Collie Brook Road. The last time I stood up on this stand to speak, I was incredibly anxious. Despite the fact that many of my teachers can attest that I'm certainly not the quietest person in school. Public speaking is difficult for me. Tonight, I'm anxious, but not because of public speaking. I'm anxious not only for the future of education, but for the future of this town. Of the countless people that spoke two weeks ago, almost every single one of them were against these budget cuts. Despite this, five out of the seven town council members, you guys, voted against the people's will. Town council members that are supposed to be our elected officials and represent our voices. Instead, they did the opposite, voting down party lines as usual. How am I to have faith in the future of our town when its government doesn't even listen to its people? Besides that, we all know that COVID has taken a massive blow on education. I have a hard time trying to understand how anybody can justify taking money away from our schools when we're still in the process of recovering. Not only did it affect academic performance, it affected mental health greatly. Suicide rates are higher than ever, peaking during the pandemic, and they still haven't gone down. This isn't some issue that doesn't just occur at our school either. I myself struggle and still do struggle with mental health, and I did hospitalized at the end of my freshman year due to such things. If it hadn't been for the countless teachers that had supported me throughout and been so incredibly flexible, I don't know if I would have ever gotten back on track and been able to come back to school. I'm asking you, I'm not asking for your pity or for your empathy. I'm asking for you to recognize that my teachers are the ones who had the biggest impact in getting me through that time. These teachers that are on the verge of being cut are teachers that are potentially somebody else's lifeline. Teachers that can help a student through incredibly difficult times, just like they did for me. Education should always be a priority, no matter what. It's vital, as funding education is quite simply an investment, as we are the ones who will soon be running this world. Budget cuts like these are not only a cut to education, but a cut to students' mental health and the future. This isn't something that I want to do, and this isn't something that I'm sure many of my other fellow classmates want to do. We shouldn't have to stand up here and fight for our education. With all the other stressors and teenagers' lives, don't make us stress about our schooling. Put the students first and listen to the people that put you in those chairs. If you don't want to be out of them by the next election. Remember, myself and all the other students whose education you are stealing from will be the ones voting for your position in the next election, so choose wisely.
Hello, I'm Kristen Flannery, eight Flannery Row. I'm a veteran teacher and parent to two, but tonight I speak as a parent. In two thousand and fourteen, I stood up a number of times during budget season to fight for my young daughter to have access to full-day kindergarten. I spent many evenings in tears at my computer researching and agonizing over the thought that I'd have to put my little five-year-old on a bus to Hartford for her to get a full day of school. At that time, East Hampton was one of the last local towns to not automatically have kindergartners in all day. Parents and teachers argued that it would be impossible for our students to meet the expectation placed on these littles of only four to six years old if they were only in school for a couple hours a day. And due to an outcry from parents and teachers, the boards agreed, the public voted, and thankfully, we've never looked back. I've spoken at many meetings of multiple boards over the years for a variety of reasons. And while I have great respect for the work you must do, I will not sit idly by and watch detrimental decisions be made by the few in power. I am here to set an example to my children and my students to speak up and speak out for what is important and what is morally right. As elected officials, it is your responsibility and duty to represent the entire community's interests. It is abundantly clear where the vast majority of the community stands on this issue. It is part of your job to not only sit and respectfully listen to the community, but to actually think, reflect, consider their thoughts, perspectives, and expertise, and then act accordingly. Many of the student speakers alluded to a particular teacher. It should be known to you that the teacher they are so worried about is just one example of the importance of all the teachers and for school to feel like a safe place. Sadly, I mean that in just as much a physical way as an emotional one. It is not about that one teacher. And the teachers and the students certainly aren't being used by Mr. Smith or anyone else. To dismiss them and essentially publicly insult and accuse them of being easily manipulated is ignorant and out of touch. Today's children and teens are bright, thoughtful, loud, vocal, and work hard to be on the right side of history. And frankly, I'm here for it. My daughter is moving to the high school this coming year, and it's very excited to be a bell ringer, to follow in the footsteps of most of her family, to proudly participate in sports and community interest clubs, and to take advantage of the courses we have. I won't lie, East Hampton cannot compete with many of the offerings and opportunities of different districts, no matter what the budget. But I have always taught my children and my students my motto. You get out what you put in. If you show up, do the work, and do your best, you will find success. So tonight, I'm imploring you all to thoughtfully listen and consider what your constituents want. And remember, you get out what you put in.
Michelle Amire, Streets nine, Hog Hill. I'm not a public speaker, I'm nervous. First and foremost, I thank you for your time and attention. I know you all take your position seriously and the hard work at attempting to make the best decisions for our community. I'm sure each one of you have received tremendous amounts of feedback in the last several weeks that you have spent countless hours on your personal time digesting it all. Slightly different perspective. I was born and raised in post-apartheid South Africa, where large classroom sizes were the norm. Due to this, as a student, I struggled immensely with learning and fell through the cracks of the education system, where teachers were understandably overwhelmed. It wasn't until adolescence that I was diagnosed with ADHD and several other learning disabilities. I sometimes wonder where I would have been today if my teachers hadn't been so overwhelmed and had been able to intervene sooner. I'm a proud spouse to an active-duty military member who's served our country for more than twenty years. As he approaches retirement and transitions into civilian life, the strongest motivator in choosing a town to plant roots was a great education system. Our three daughters have been through four school districts spanning across three states, and they have struggled at each one. Each one of those districts have had large classroom sizes, and all of them failed to identify that my oldest daughter was struggling to learn and with an undiagnosed learning disability, just like myself. It wasn't until arriving in East Hampton that we were met with competent, compassionate, observant teachers that were able to help advocate for our daughter and get her the assistance that she needed. Instead of surviving, my daughter is now thriving. For the first time ever, she is competent, she's happy, she's successful in making high honors every semester this year. My father, God rest his soul, moved us to America to give my family and his future grandchildren a better future. He often spoke of Ubuntu. It's an African term meaning humanity. It is also times translated as I am because we are. Or humanity, humanity towards others. Tonight, I pray that God gives you the strength and the humanity to do what is right for our children and send the budget back, please.
Brian Corvo, forty-two Sunrise Lane. What this, what is this budget argument really about? It boils down to money and value. The budget that the Board of Finance is proposing results in reducing the quality of our schools and does not adequately provide for police and ambulance. That budget still results in a mill rate increase of one point one seven. For most of us, assuming assessed values between two hundred and three hundred thousand dollars, those are homes with the fair market value of two hundred eighty-five to four hundred and thirty thousand. Taxes would go up between about two hundred and forty to three hundred and fifty dollars a year, about twenty to thirty dollars a month. More expensive properties pay more. What would it cost to keep what we have now? The budget that the Board of Finance cut that would keep teachers, maintain excellent schools, and give police and ambulance what they need to keep us safe results in a mill increase of two point three five. Assuming the same assessed values, taxes would go up between four hundred and seventy to seven hundred and five dollars a year, forty to sixty dollars a month. The difference between these two budgets, what we're really arguing about comes down to about twenty to thirty dollars a month for most of us. To put this in perspective, here's some prices from around town. Ice cream, small one, five-ten. Dunkin' Donuts coffee, two dollars, three dollars a cup. Big Mac meal, ten-seventy-nine. Golf, forty-eight to sixty-three dollars with a cart, that's in Portland. Uh, glass of wine or beers, ten bucks. Wings, sixteen. Entrees start around twenty. Look, no one likes to pay taxes. We're adults, we don't like it. Times are tough, we understand that, but you don't have a lot of people so passionate about saving twenty to thirty bucks a month that they're filling a room. There's a difference between keeping good quality schools and adequate police and emergency services. It's literally the cost of a plate of wings and maybe a beer or a round of golf each month. That's it. That's all we're talking about. It's chicken poop to keep it nice. The real issue here is what do you guys value? By not sending this budget back, what you're saying to these people is our schools aren't worth a plate of wings or a burger and a beer. Look at the officers in the back of the room and tell them you're not going to send this budget back because they're not worth a few ice cream cones at the end of the day. That's what you're saying, you black the blue until it costs you some green. Tell the father whose daughter needed an ambulance, so it was your last time, my coffee's more important, because that's about what it comes down to. There's a value to living in a town with exceptional schools and police and other services that far exceeds the cost. I hope you understand that the value of something could be greater than its cost. Unfortunately, I doubt you do. I read your letters. You'll probably look to cut more to save absolutely nothing, maybe throw some fries on it. Because it's that important that we save a little more money and throw away a great school. I hope you send this back to the Board of Finance to have it re, to have it reviewed, reflected upon, and responded with a budget that continues to make this an excellent town to live in and raise a family and, and not a cheap place to live. But I feel like your vision is to lead us into a cheap dump with poor education and bad services.
Martha Wick, seventeen, Maple Street. As a proud member of the Board of Education and a retired social worker who's spent thirty years working with youth, I'm here to redress the letter, the open letter to Mr. Smith in the River East last week. The articulate, thoughtful, and mature comments given by our young people two weeks ago should be commended, not misrepresented. The suggestion that they were coached or somehow weaponized by the very people who have dedicated their lives to educating them and keeping them safe every single day and committed to their well-being makes you sound out of touch. And it's based solely in politics. It's not true. Teachers, janitors, lunch people, volunteers, administrators, and their assistants all come together to foster knowledge, inspire emotional and social growth, and critical and independent thinking. That's what you saw last week. I'm also a small business owner in this town, and I have the privilege of meeting hundreds of residents, and I've become friends with many. I'm also meeting many, many young couples who are choosing East Hampton to buy their first homes and to start their families. And when I ask them why East Hampton, undoubtedly, education is one of the first or, you know, in their priority for choosing our community. These young people are looking for a community that's both safe, friendly, and will provide the education for their children. Many of them are paying attention to what we're doing tonight. Do we value education? Will we, or we all know that a town that doesn't value education and children will not attract future generations. Everyone in this room understands that the foundation of community begins with its schools. It's what's kept so many generations of families here, and it's what's drawing younger families to East Hampton. I'm urging you to send this budget back. If you choose to ignore all of these parents, students, residents, your constituents, know that everyone in this room and everyone that was here last week, whether Republican, Democrat, Independent, or Unaffiliated. Ten more seconds, please. We have all found common ground that will unite Republicans, Democrats, Independents, and Unaffiliated voters. What a noble issue that brings us all together. I'm going to remind us all that paying taxes is just a part of life. Nobody likes to do it. But coming together to decide how we spend our revenue is what will define us as a community. You have to make the right choice tonight. Thank you.
Brendan Hines, nine Terragon Drive. About a year and a half ago, I was really fortunate that the first responders and the Andalines Association made it to my mother's house in time to save her. They were there so quickly. I live about ten minutes away from there, and they made it before I did. I'm really concerned that that change in not, not funding first responders is going to make it a lot harder for that. And I left last two weeks ago with a lot of questions, and so I kind of wanted to share some questions that maybe we, we would all hear discussed tonight. So I got four weeks extra with my mother because of the quick and timely service. I don't know how much that's worth, but I think it's, it was invaluable to me. How much of the increase in our Board of Ed, Ed Budget comes out of salary increases or increases to insurance? Two items that we, we don't have any ability to change. Would seven hundred and ninety-two thousand cover just salary increases? How is a middle school roof funded and paid for? Have, has anybody worked in a building where the roof leaks? How does it feel when you work for the morale in the building when the roof leaks? How much time does it take to handle OSHA violations when people complain? Is there a deadline for providing staff information about a possibility of a cut according to a contract? Um, is there an order under which staff have to be cut when there's a reduction in force? I was expecting to hear some conversation last week and discussion about what was going on with the, the Board of Ed budget in particular. My hope is tonight we may hear some of that because I think it's very important, and I think I agree with all the speakers ahead of me around the importance and the amount of time and energy and the fact that there's a lot of people that believe it's worth the increase in tax dollars. Please send both budgets back to the Board of Finance. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rachel Mansfield. I live at ten Eastern Bridge Road in East Hampton. Um, I've been a member of the community of East Hampton since my father moved our family here in nineteen eighty-two. He was a teacher as well. I'm a legacy in the teachers of East Hampton. I've attended both the middle and high school here and have spent more combined hours within the walls of East Hampton schools than most of the students have been alive. In two thousand and eight, my husband and I had the opportunity to buy a new home, and we looked in Marlboro, we looked in Glastonbury, we looked in East Hampton, we looked at Ram. He liked Glastonbury. Sorry, honey, I'm selling you out. Uh, yeah, I kept pushing for my hometown. He brought up the schools, and I continually reassured him we would be fine here in Belltown. I knew these schools, I argued, and I had no doubt our daughters would be well-educated in East Hampton. Since that time, I have been lucky enough to work for this district. For over ten years, I have taught in town, splitting that time between the middle and high schools, and I can confidently say that my assessment of the teaching staff was right on. That is the first thing I always tell people who ask me what the schools are like in East Hampton. I tell them that the teachers are second to none. Everything else, well, we have an elementary school that closes randomly for heating issues, a middle school filled with plastic buckets every time it rains, and a high school without enough classrooms for its classes. Pay-to-play sports, extracurricular clubs that must be self-funding because there is no money in the budget for them. I hope you all enjoyed The Addams Family. And dwindling classroom supplies are all a result of past year's bare bones budgets. East Hampton has historically been forced to do more with less. The superintendent himself has put forward a budget that does not ask for more. On the contrary, Mr. Smith is asking for the status quo. I know everyone in this room wants so more than that for our students, but this is the reality of our budgetary situation here in East Hampton. Yet the Board of Finance is saying no. Once again, you must do more with even less than last year. Less teachers, less supplies, less support. As a parent and an employee, I'm sick of it. Sticking it to the state by sticking it to the students is absolutely illogical and causes our greatest resource, our children, to once again be the ones to suffer. Send this proposal back to the Board of Finance and let the people of East Hampton decide. As my students know, a referendum as defined by Merriam-Webster as a civics teacher is the principle or practice of submitting to popular vote a measure passed on or proposed by a legislative body. In this case, the Board of Ed that we all as East Hampton residents voted for because we thought those people were best experienced to decide what a Board of Education budget should look like. That legislative, that legislative body has voted. It is now time to let the people of East Hampton vote as well. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Denise Sawyers. I live at seventy-seven Barton Hill Road. I've been a resident of East Hampton, and I'm, I appreciate your time, the council, the media. I was one of the people that called you to be here because I think it's important that we bring light to our need, and our need is to continue to believe that education is the key. I don't think, Ms. Waugh, that people were coerced to speak here, and I vehemently disagree with you on that. Um, the child that was in front of me, the young man who's in a child's team, and, and I'm so proud of him because his leg wasn't shaking when he spoke this time. When I saw him last time, his legs were shaking, but he got up here bravely because there was a teacher that stood behind him and helped him learn English, have the power and the ability to move forward, and people to support him. So I disagree. We need to respect our students. We need to respect that our children don't want to be in this room. They don't want to come and speak here. The last thing you want to do is hang out with old people. So I'm willing to donate my burger, my fries, and strawberries. They're on sale at Stop Shop, three ninety-nine. But, you know, I just think that we need to do better. It's important. We are better than this. We shouldn't be fighting around party lines because education is the key. It's the most important thing that we can give our community. It's our tax base. It's logical. It's not emotional. Maybe it's a little bit of both, because I feel emotional. And I, I am a logical person as well. And I do believe that the constituents are speaking. They're in here. Look at them. Look at them all. We're all here for the same reason, because we believe education is the foundation to our community. And if you can't see that, you don't belong in these seats.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Finn, and I live at eighty-five Champion Hill Road. Those who don't know me, I have five children in the East Hampton School System between kindergarten and eighth grade. Two weeks ago, when I spoke to this council, I was angry and frustrated by the decision of the Board of Finance to reduce the Board of Ed budget, the police budget, the Andalus Association contribution. All three of those departments have played significant roles in the lives of my family. I spoke from the heart, as did all the speakers that night. Tonight, I want to focus on the numbers. I want to address comments made in letters to the editor by two of the members of this council in particular. First, the numbers. According to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, CPIU, the most common measurement of inflation has in the Northeast averaged six point four percent from July of two thousand twenty-two to March of two thousand twenty-three. And I have that citation, and I'll give it to you afterwards. In other words, the cost of everything has increased by an average of six point four percent annualized since the beginning of the current fiscal year. As Mr. Phil Howard was kind enough to point out in his recent River East letter to the editor, the Board of Education only requested a six point two percent increase. From a total of dollars perspective, that is an increase, of course, in terms of actual dollars being spent. But in terms of purchasing power, the Board of Ed only requested enough funds to keep pace with inflation. They did so in keeping with this council's budget policy statement, which was unanimously approved at your November eighth meeting. The Board of Finance's proposed budget represented a cut of two point five percent in purchasing power for the Board of Education. Given that nearly eighty-five percent of the Board of Education budget represents salaries and benefits for teachers and staff, it's hard to see how that reduction would be accomplished. it's hard to see how that reduction would be accomplished without laying off of teachers. Now I want to address a letter written by one of the council members who sought to malign Superintendent Smith for weaponizing the budget process due to the teachers who last week were informed that they do not have jobs at the end of the school year. This letter claimed that Mr. Smith was encouraging students and parents to speak based on, and I quote, falsehood, lies and deceit. That statement and letter were truly shameful and demonstrated a complete lack of understanding of how the Board of Education and Superintendent made the decision. After the Board of Finance decided to cut the education budget from a 0% increase in purchasing power to 2.5% decrease. Staffing decisions, as anyone could easily find out, are made primarily based on tenure and certification status. Unfortunately, the wonderful English teacher that the students have referenced is the most recent addition to the English department at the high school. That status and the irresponsible Board of Finance decision are the reason she was let go. Finally, a note about the politics. The current makeup of the Town Council, the Board of Finance and Board of Education are a direct result of parents frustrated by decisions made by the previous boards during the COVID-19 pandemic. If you think those same constituents also provided you with a mandate to cut teachers and reduce town services, you have gravely mistaken your own voters. If the current budget proposals are passed to the town, they will be voted down by the same voters who supported you for office and will be remembered at the next election. I urge the Town Council to send the budget back to the Board of Finance to restore the education budget, the ambulance association budget and the police budget. Thank you.
Irene Cook, 11 South Main Street. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak and for everybody else to speak as well, as well as your time serving on this board. I know sometimes it can feel like a thankless job. I wanted to correct something that I alluded to last time that I spoke via Zoom that the referendums cost about $30,000. They do not. They cost about $5,000 each time you run it. What I was remembering is that a few years ago, when we went through a budget process where we had four or five referendums, the entire cost of finally passing a budget was around $20,000 or $30,000. I remember that could have funded a part-time para educator. Because at that time, I was a part-time para educator and I knew how much money approximately I was making. So my point still remains, anytime that we throw money out of the window by not passing a budget, that cost could have funded a stipend, could have funded supplies and curriculum materials. So please send the budget back to the Board of Finance with some meaningful referendums. I urge you to include the questions of yes, no, too low or no, too high, so that in case it doesn't pass, you have some meaningful feedback in which direction to go. Education as well as public safety is important to all citizens of East Hampton. Please send the budgets back.
Sarah Perez, 110 Comstock Trail. Tonight, I'm here in support of East Hampton's children and the amazing educators in our district instead of attending my child's baseball game. While I hate to miss any of his games, he knows it's important for me to be here and to see that the education budget and the police department budgets are not cut. I'm disappointed. After the past three years and all of the added responsibilities and challenges thrown at educators, I'm disappointed to see that the Board of Finance priority is to make drastic cuts to the Board of Education's budget at the expense of our children. Much of the annual budget of the Board of Ed is made up of fixed costs. Most increases are either contractual obligations or are due to rising costs that neither Mr. Smith nor the Board of Education have any control over. While Mr. Smith does his best to minimize any increase, year after year, the Board of Education budget submittals do not request enough funding to support our children in the schools. Yet the Board of Finance and the Town Council look to cut away at an already thin budget. The nearly $8,000, $800,000 cut to the education budget by the Board of Finance directly hurts the children and the families in this community. Cutting funding to our schools will not cut the costs of the fixed expenses. If you accept the budget with the reduction, you'll create an environment that puts our children further behind their peers. We already have large class sizes and they'll become larger. And that's larger than the surrounding towns. These cuts will not only hurt the kids that require additional services, it'll also negatively impact the children that are looking for challenges and they won't get them. Is that what we want? To set our children back yet again? To risk having more kids facing mental health crises? Are you willing to gamble with our children? I'm not. Teachers will be spread even thinner than they are if you are cutting their jobs. Our children are facing more today than any of us did when we were their age. By cutting the funding to the schools, you send a message to our children that they don't matter, that their education doesn't matter, that our teachers don't matter. Many of these teachers pull money from their own pocket to provide supplies that they lack in their classrooms. How much more do they have to give? How many of you work for companies or government offices and you reach into your pockets for supplies? I know I certainly don't. Yet year after year, that's exactly what our teachers do to make sure that their students and that their classrooms have enough. That's not right. Our children and teachers deserve better. Please do the right thing. Listen to the parents, educators and taxpayers that are here tonight, just as we were two weeks ago. We are your constituents. We do not support these cuts. Send both budgets back to the Board of Finance and tell them that they are unacceptable.
Alexis Tamero, 25 Lake Boulevard. First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming out to support our schools and community. Since November of 2021, I have had the pleasure of working at Memorial School as a math and reading para and I also have two children who attend Memorial School. I also have a second job at Memorial. I am the one and only Cheetah mascot. It's a sweaty job, but somebody's got to do it. Do not tell the children, okay? They don't know it's me. I truly cannot say that I've been fine since the last Town Council meeting. Every time I come to school, I think about how our young learners could possibly be affected if this budget isn't passed back to the Board of Finance. Our children are the future and they depend on us to make the right decisions. I have learned a lot since joining the Memorial family and I feel that most of the time our students are teaching me. And I know for a fact that teaching one-on-one or in small groups is better for our young learners. I can tell you firsthand that supporting a teacher with 10 to 20 students in a class is pushing it. And while I have to sub a class from time to time, it can be very tricky or nerve-wracking not knowing what to expect. Thank God for subplans because you teachers are amazing when you leave those for us. Having bigger classes will not allow teachers to focus on the support each student needs. My husband and I were lucky that our daughter's teacher recognized that she needed extra support with math and got all the services that she needed. Now our daughter is more confident and is thriving. And there are still many kids that need extra support because of COVID. I started at Memorial when masks were still mandated and I couldn't possibly figure out how I was going to teach reading if the kids couldn't see my mouth or hear the sounds correctly. Luckily, our specialists, who are so amazing and have helped us with these obstacles such as these. So I asked the town what's excuse this time? Why not just pass the budget back over to the Board of Finance? Or you can just keep on taking the risk of not giving someone else the responsibility to make the right decisions. Thank you.
Good evening. Craig Frost, 63 White Birch Road, 23-year resident parent, 18-year teacher and coach in town. So there are many people here tonight who can better speak and have spoken better, more confidently on the economics of this budget than I. After all, I'm only a third grade teacher and Bridges has not gotten to the unit on town budgets yet. I would like to begin, unfortunately, by addressing some remarks made by a member of this council on the most recent River East. I find it disgraceful that a conscious choice was made to compare the atrocities involving children during the Vietnam War to children exercising their First Amendment rights. Involving an issue that likely affects them. I'm sure there are some Vietnam veterans, my father-in-law included, who served in country and on the front lines, would love to have that debate with you. The fact that you even thought this comparison was accurate shows how out of step you are with the members of your own community. That, by the way, includes all the youth in East Hampton. I'm fairly certain that there was no clandestine meeting prior to the last Town Council meeting where children were brainwashed and coerced into defending the education budget. It is possible. It is possible that the children actually have a pretty high level of intelligence and sophistication and maybe, just maybe, wanted to fight to protect what they have. It was never about just one teacher, but all of the teachers who the children may lose, along with countless other resources. I'll reiterate what I stated at the last meeting. What you see as numbers and line items, I see as future doctors, veterinarians, teachers, and yes, even Town Council members. I see dreamers. I see the light of hope in the eyes of the youth in this town each and every day I step into Memorial School. It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who airs, who comes short, comes up short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcoming. But who does actually strive to do the deeds? Who knows the great enthusiasms, the great devotions? Who spends himself in a worthy cause? Who the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement? And who, at worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat. So if you don't know, it's Teddy Roosevelt's speech from 1910, Paris, France. We, the teachers of East Hampton, are the men and women in the arena each and every day. It is our faces marred by dust and sweat and blood. Thank you. It is us who give every ounce of our being, of our soul, to ensure that the next generation is prepared to lead with greatness and humility. We will be remembered as the doers of deeds. What will you be remembered for? You have the opportunity to be remembered as the courageous hero in this story. Fortunately, you have the power of choice and the ability to right a wrong. Please send the budget back to the Board of Finance for reconsideration. And believe it or not, I do appreciate your service to our town and our council. Thank you.
Hello, Elaine Pellegrino, Six Not Made Lane. I first want to tell you that about 30 seconds ago, the high heart rate monitor went off on my Apple Watch because that is how little I want to be standing here. Okay? I want to thank the council. I voted for many of you across party lines. And I do respect that this is a volunteer position and I do appreciate it. I do not respect the letter in River East. My husband is a retiree. We are on a fixed income. I am fighting cancer. I am an employee of the Board of Education and I have been for 17 years. My two children went to school here. They graduated. They are having successful careers beyond anything I could imagine. I can't possibly speak more eloquently than the students in attendance here tonight have. I wonder how anyone could possibly doubt the quality of their education and the dedication of their instructors after listening to them. My own children were not only educated, but were loved by their teachers, something vital to their mental health and development. I see every day the care and thoughtful, intense effort being put into the budget by, among others, Paul Smith, Mary Clark, Rod Mosher and Karen Acetta. They are not spending frivolously. They are just trying to keep the status quo in a time of great inflation. I'm a practical person. If you don't send the budget back to the Board of Finance for funds to be added back in, you will be wasting our taxpayer dollars and our time. You have a duty to put forward a budget that reasonably has a chance of passing. And I can tell you, this is not that budget. If you don't allow for a no-too-low, no-too-high option, you are saying you don't care what the people you represent want. Finally, you are supposed to represent us, not yourself. You cannot vote tonight against the overwhelming majority of the voters you're hearing from. Not one person has stood up here in support of the budget as it stands. I have one final thing to speak on. My daughter, who is a physician's assistant, earning an excellent salary, has still been a volunteer ambulance EMT for the last eight years. She has chosen against my recommendation, to be honest, because the number of hours she works is astronomical. She's getting another master's degree to continue to volunteer as an EMT. The ambulance deserves the money from the budget that they need. Thank you.
Good evening. William Faber, 45, Schoolhouse Lane. When I first came here, my first Town Council meeting ever, I cited Confucius. However, based on the decisions and quite frankly, actions of some members of the board, I think Buddy the Elf would be more applicable. Buddy the Elf once said in one of my favorite movies and said the one of the best lines, I believe, in cinematic scriptwriting history. "You sit on a throne of lies." And do thank you. But listen. I found a pamphlet, a slip from when you were running for office that said a couple of things you cared about, a picnic. It said food and drink for the kids, how ironic. However, it also said, "Your kids," the third bullet. And in parentheses, it said parental choice. Well, let me tell you, the parents have spoken. The parents have spoken, members of the council, the parents have spoken. We, and I myself, a 15-year-old ninth grader at your school, doesn't take much to realize that lying to your constituents probably is not the best idea for reelection. However, however, we wonder as a society, as a community and as a country as a whole, where are we going? The numbers in gang violence has risen, the numbers of adolescent incarcerations has risen, and where do we stand and why does that happen? Well, let me tell you right here and now why that happens. Because members of the council who have caught education before you, who have caught support services before you, have forced these children to believe that no one in the school or in the town cares about them. Humans are pack animals, members of the council. They will go to people who they feel want to support them. And gangs are people who would like to support the misdoings and misdeeds of many children. Yet those children have been misled because support services and teachers have been cut. They have been cut, members of the council. And let me say one more thing. An adaptation to a quote by one of my favorite auditors and British Prime Ministers, Winston Churchill. "We will fight you in the boardrooms. We will fight you in the media and we will fight you in the elections because we will never waver." You think that you can disarm us by putting one meeting after the other, after the other. We have to wait. We have to re-decide. We can publish things in the newspaper. However, I tell you now that as long as I can stand here and as long as the members of this community can stand before you and sit and ably get in this building, we will never surrender. Thank you very much.
I'm Eric Rosenberg, 15 Bay Road. I'm the chairman of the Commission on Aging. And first of all, I wanted to say that there are clearly major needs in town that I agree with. But I want to also mention, there's another group that has needs in town. That is the two thousand one hundred eighty citizens who are sixty-five years older, older, about a quarter of the voters. And their needs are often fulfilled by the senior center. And the senior center budget was accepted by the town manager, including, uh, adding a full-time equivalent, or at least taking two part-time positions and putting them together as a full-time job. The importance to the director of the senior center, Joanne Ewing, is that if you have two people job-sharing who are trying to create or run programs, or two people job-sharing who are trying to solve problems for older adults that come in, oftentimes there's miscommunication. There's, there are pieces that drop through the cracks. And she has requested, and the town manager's budget agreed, that, uh, there should be a combining to be a full-time position. And that was taken away by the Board of Finance, despite letters from the Commission on Aging to the Board of Finance and to the town council. So I just wanted to say, as you reconsider what's going on in the budget, do remember that there are a lot of senior needs. At the same time, that COVID affected students greatly, affected the ambulance greatly, affected the police. It also affected the one-sixth of the members of town who are sixty-five years and over. So please remember them as you consider the budget. Thank you.
Good evening, um, I'm Stephanie Heine. I live at five Melbourne Avenue. I'd like to apologize in advance. I do not have a well-thought-out written speech, because I had every intention to do that today, but I was in back-to-back meetings and it never happened. So, but I'm here, and I think this is very important, so I'm gonna try to wing it the best I can. Bear with me. Um, I am the mother of a four-year-old son that attends pre-K at Memorial School. And as you can see, I have another on the way in July. Uh, my husband and I moved here six years ago, and one of the leading factors for that reason was the school system. Uh, I have four sisters, one who lives in town already, and she, you know, gave me a lot of encouragement about the fact that East Hampton had amazing school systems. And coming from a town, which I will not name, uh, historically, I was born and raised, did not have great school systems. It really does affect everything. And, and I love my hometown, but I needed to leave mainly because of that reason, and knowing that I was gonna have a family. And I know how much a bad school system can affect everything around it. Um, so, that being said, my other sister is looking to buy a home soon as well, and we were very much encouraging her to move this way, uh, but she has a son with special needs. And if things like budget cuts to the school system are gonna be taking place, I don't know if I feel as confident encouraging my family to move here, because I already am going to feel very slighted if the classrooms are bigger, you know, and things are being promised that are no longer taking place. Um, you know, the big thing is that when we're talking about non-emotional stuff, this decision doesn't just impact people with children and people in the school system. It affects everyone. Good, good school systems directly equate to good property values. They directly equate to overall economy. When you have good school systems, you have hard-working, young, tax-paying families moving into towns. Those same people support local businesses. Those same people help encourage a good society. And, you know, I know that historically, from what I've learned about this town, that we have really worked to keep our mill rate down and keep low taxes. It is a benefit, but it's impossible to do all the time. And, you know, I liked the fact that I moved from a town with very high taxes to ones that were smaller. But at the same time, I also know that the investment is worth it, especially when it comes to education and police and EMTs. Um, those things all matter. Without those things, that's when your town starts to crumble, and that's when saving money now is going to hurt in the long run. Sorry, real quick, I promise. This will, having those things, cutting the budget now is only going to impact us and cost more money later when we look back and say how horrible the decision was, and that we need to overcompensate for all of the problems that occurred during that budget cut. So I implore you, I have more than that, but I implore you, please send the budget back. I know this is a hard decision, but this does affect everyone, and it will ruin things for a long time to come.
Well, board, my name is Adam Doogie from sixty-four Barton Hill Road, uh, father of two-year-old daughter and a five-year-old son, who, just this Friday, will be going for his kindergarten orientation at Memorial School. Um, I'm gonna keep this short, especially since I'm not sure anyone in this room can do a great follow-up following Sir William Faber over here. Um, so keeping this short, I don't want to address statistics or numbers, because there's a lot of people in this room that are better at than me. But I want to talk about a couple of other things. One is, I want to recognize that during the last meeting at our follow-up comments, uh, I may have spoke a little bit, uh, with too much frustration, said a few words I probably shouldn't have. However, as many people here felt in this room, I was incredibly frustrated with not just the outcome of the meeting, but also a little bit disgusted and frustrated with the lack of discussion or effort put into the vote that was made by many of you. Um, I also want to recognize that I do respect the fact that this is a volunteer position. You guys are put into a very tough spot. You know, being on a board that needs to make tough decisions for the greater good can be a thankless and tough task. Um, I have been fortunate or unfortunate enough to participate as a board member in various organizations where my thought process or opinions on many subjects were not met by a unanimous agreement. I was usually the only member who broke away from one or two of the sides that were voting and spoke up when there was very, a clear issue that I needed attention to, regardless of how the other side felt on the subject. However, many times, even after speaking up as a board member, I'd look around during the time to vote, and you see other board members looking at each other, and then they'd raise their hands, much like what happened here last time. Um, coming to a meeting with a decision already made, regardless of the public opinion, rarely ends great. However, breaking away from the group thought, much of the time would get one or two others on the board to rethink their position. All I'm asking is that you do the same. Reconsider your position and listen to the public. I recognize my mistake during the last meeting, which we talked about, you know, regarding the board's education budget, the police budget, ambulance budget. All we're asking as a public is for you to do the same and reconsider your position. Recognize that you may have made a mistake, and there's another perspective that you need to consider. Send this budget back, or at least send it up to a public vote, and recognize that the budget cuts proposed by the Board of Finance, the same that you voted not to reconsider, need to be reconsidered. Thank you.
Hi, I am Gillian Ross. Um, I am absolutely terrified to do this. Um, so, I came to the town council meeting last time. Am I already tired? This is not good. Um, so I was born in East Hampton. My grandparents lived literally at the bottom of the hill. Like, they sold the land to make this town hall possible. Um, I want this town to succeed. Um, I lived in East Hampton and Hebron growing up. My mom moved us to East Hampton, or moved us to Hebron, because the school system was better, you know, however many years ago. Um, but I did start school at Memorial. Um, it was just the higher, you know, high school situation. But I had Miss Mitty. She was amazing. She's here tonight. Um, my kid. I guess. I'm sorry. Okay. Um, my child also had Ms. Snyder, who spoke at the last meeting. I saw Ms. Elsesser is here, because her this year. Um, so, my dad's lived in town. He lives on the lake, joined the lake, and he rotary clubs, always tried to better East Hampton. Um, I moved to the area during COVID. Um, from Killingworth, which had a great school district. And Allison died, and I ended up here. And so, I took a job here with ABA program after subbing, because the school was just so inviting, like, family presence. Um, and like Connor had friends, everything at his last school, it's a private school. And, um, had Spanish, like, everything. And then I moved here, and he's like, "Where's my Spanish class?" Well, kindergarten, most kindergartens don't have Spanish, but, I mean, I ended up getting him a tutor, because we didn't have Spanish here. Um, I mean, I work in a class with Ms. Dupweaks as in ABA. I also work with Ms. Evans, um, and various other classes as needed. Um, but I also, um, I got off topic. Bear with me here. Um, the class sizes right now are at twenty, and I came from educational daycare, who, um, is NIAC-approved, has a one-to-ten ratio for the same age groups. Um, and I know that's shudder. Oh, thank you. Thank you, Nurse Katie. Um, anyways, so we had a one-to-ten ratio for daycare. And I feel like a ratio over twenty children for one teacher with no other paras or, like, part-time paras is not an option, especially because half of these kids are raised during COVID. I'm sorry, like, they didn't have the correct, or not correct, you know what I mean? Um, like, they did not get the same daycare experience as the rest of us all did, once upon a time. Um, so, like, one child can need a lot more time than other children. And I feel like, um, I feel like they need more teachers in the room, or paras in the room, or anything else in the room. Um, I totally butchered this. I had a lot of other things to say. Um, but either way, these children are going to be your doctors and your caregivers when you're in nursing homes in, like, not that long a time. So either way, I'm just saying that, uh, sorry, not to call anyone old or anything, like, my dad is same age, but either way, either way, um, they're the future, and so, like, if they're taking care of you, they kind of need the education. Um, sorry, I got super emotional. Um, but anyways, thank you for your time. Um, but, yeah, uh, that was pretty much.
The Not a Barber, twenty-seven, Carriage Drive. Like everyone else taking time away from their families, I'm here yet again to demand that the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four education budget for the East Hampton Public Schools be sent back to the Board of Finance for immediate reassessment. I have a daughter that will be entering the school system this year, and one right behind her. I refuse to sit back and watch our town make dangerous cuts to the budget. Our children deserve better. They deserve a comprehensive education that prepares them for success in the real world. They deserve the resources necessary to excel in their studies and pursue their dreams. Our schools are the backbone to this community. We must invest in them properly. This means providing our students with resources and facilities they need to excel. It means hiring and retaining the best educators and giving them the support to do their jobs well. But teachers are essential for the success of our community. They inspire our children, they challenge them, they help them grow. Sometimes they are their safe and trusted person when maybe they don't have that at home. They are the ones who shape the future leaders of our community. They are the ones who give our children the tools they need to succeed in life. We cannot afford to shortchange our teachers any further. We cannot afford to treat them as an afterthought. If we want to ensure the future success of our community, we must invest in our teachers. It is the responsibility of this council to ensure that our schools are properly funded. Anything less is a dereliction of duty. I urge you again, do not let the budget proposal stand. Please send it back to the Board of Finance for reassessment. Let them know the education of our children is not something to be taken lightly. Let them know that we demand better for our teachers and for our community. Thank you.
My name is Bob Heine, nineteen Burtford Road, East Hampton. Uh, I've lived in town, uh, just under twenty-eight years, and I've been working as a sub for the last eleven after retiring after a forty-plus year in manufacturing. Fifty-plus years ago, I graduated from UConn with a degree in political science, and my area of specialty was US governmental systems, specifically federal and state, with one course in local government. And through that professional learning and my years of experience since then, I know political theater when I see it, and this is an example of political theater for better or worse. I think we all know how the town council's likely to vote. I would hope they would send the budget back to the finance board to take another look at it. When the budget does go to referendum, I would pray that both halves of the budget, because it's bifurcated, both halves would have, uh, two questions. Is the budget too high or too low? So, after the budget is defeated, if it's one way or the other, we have a better handle on exactly how the people think and how they want to support it. One other thought is, uh, one of the previous speakers quoted Theodore Roosevelt, a Republican. What you expect a Republican to We have a bunch of Republicans here. I hope you can take some solace in what they said and how Teddy Roosevelt uh, governed. So once again, just, I pray you return this back to the Board of Finance, and they can make the appropriate adjustment for the betterment of our schools.
Lily Cronin, twenty-four Abbey Road. What I'm about to say is going to sound extremely morbid, but it is the unfortunate truth. The cuts proposed by the Board of Finance will make the probability of mass casualties in a school shooting all the more likely. Cutting, making class sizes bigger and cutting funds to first responders will, will make going to school, which is a dangerous enough task, as is, even more dangerous. This isn't only a matter of education, it is a matter of life and death. So please send this budget back and save lives. Thank you.
Alicia Colgro, twenty-five, Warford Road. Hello, it's nice to meet you all again. I recognize the anger that has been leveled at you, but I come at you in peace, I swear. Uh, you heard me speak two weeks ago, so there's no need for me to reiterate what I said. Um, I actually wanted to begin by saying thank you. For one, thank you for your public service. It's a hard job, very hard. So thank you very much. Secondly, thank you for your acknowledgement of us students. I've read some letters in the River East, and it appears like you all received our messages very well. I cannot thank you enough for listening and for your respect. There was one opinion that I read, though, that I personally disagree with. And quite a few people have brought it up, but I feel as a student, I should give my own opinion. I read that students were rallied by the superintendent, threatened, made desperate, and then manipulated into speaking out of fear. They were lied to, and the beloved teacher was put on the line to act as a lightning rod, drumming up desperation. I cannot speak on behalf of the superintendent. I, I truly don't know his intentions, nor do I know yours. What I do know is my fellow students. I know that we have been raised to be free, independent, and intelligent thinkers. There's been a lot of discussion of what is lies and what isn't. But I do know for a fact that the specific teacher, who you are all aware of, her contract was not renewed for next year. This outraged This outraged us students. You are very correct about that. But that fact did not make us afraid, scared, or sad. It empowered us. We rallied together as a student body to learn more, educate ourselves, form our own opinions, and then act. Adults very often pick and choose when we are young adults and when we are only children. You heard our voices. Now I ask you, give them the dignity to stand on their own, products of our own strength, not manipulation, whether you agree with us or not. Thank you.
My name is Charlotte Casio, four Nutmeg Lane. This is one of the scariest things. I'm not good at public speaking at all, although some people in here may disagree. I go through anxiety every single day, which is why I wasn't here last time, because I was in the hospital due to mental health. And I had to stay overnight, so I missed the meeting. And it became six thirty and I looked at my mom all scared and she was like, what, what's wrong? All I said was I'm missing the meeting. As I was in the hospital bed, I didn't care what the doctors were doing. No, I didn't. Hey, I, no, I cared of not being here. I couldn't miss this meeting. Anyway, I had no clue I would speak tonight, but here we go. I have been to two faculty meetings and one of them I gave out lanterns to all the teachers. The reason why this comes up is because they listened and cared about what I said. And now they wear them every day without even thinking about it. Those are teachers that want to fix mental health in school. I'm going through some pretty rough times right now in school, but with all the help of my teachers and paras, I am still able to get to school and do work with their help. The one that helps me the most right now is the school psychologist. And you are trying to get rid of them. Why? You also want to expand class sizes. That would just make it harder for teachers to give support to their students. If we lose the teachers that help me every day, the teachers that don't even know what is going on, but still help me, then that would be wrong. This budget affects all of us in this room tonight. Some of the people here tonight are on the verge of losing their jobs because of these budget cuts. So please listen to what we all had to say. If it wasn't for all of my teachers, then my situation going on right now would be so, so much worse. My teachers are the reason why I show up at school every day, because it is definitely not the work. It is them. Thank you.
Frost, sixty-three, White Birch Road. I'm very nervous because I have never spoken like this before and I didn't plan for this to happen, but I feel it's important for me to do so regarding my personal situation. I'm a junior at the high school and the teachers at these schools mean so much to me and many others. My dad Craig Frost, who just spoke and is an educator himself, also spoke two weeks ago and mentioned my struggles in the past regarding school. Although I thank him for that, I'd like to emphasize this myself. I struggled and still struggle severely with mental health issues and anxiety. I can assure you, if it weren't for the counselors, teachers, and other education staff, I would not be here today. I have no idea what my life would be like if I hadn't been helped onto the right track back when I was. But I can imagine I wouldn't be receiving high honors and receiving awards like I am today. I strongly urge you to have courage and send the budget back to the Board of Finance. Thank you.
Uh, Grace Cronin, twenty-four Abbey Road. I was a class of twenty-twenty senior during the COVID pandemic, where we were abruptly sent home and never returned. If there's one thing I remember from my time here as a student, it is by far my teacher interactions, even online. Each teacher stood by us and did their best, not only to support us academically, but emotionally. They went above and beyond to show us we were not forgotten, and I'm so appreciative of everything they did for me in my thirteen years here. As a college student, I utilize everything I've learned in these schools on a day-to-day basis. How important our childhood education is to our future performance cannot be ignored. The fight for the Board of Education budget is something that I have known for as long as I can remember. I remember feeling so helpless as a student, knowing that I was the one being impacted by these cuts, and yet there was nothing I was able to do about it. Today I stand here no longer as a student of East Hampton, but as a voter of this town. The students you are hurting now will remember, I remember, and we are or will be the ones voting. Thank you.
Cindy Buchanan, forty-two William Drive. Council, thank you for your time and service. Please let us choose. That's why we vote for you. It's our choice to decide what we want to vote for. Yes, no, too low, or no, too high. Thank you.
Oops, sorry.
Lisa Johnson, thirty-nine, Skyline Drive. So last time when I came here, I was a little emotional. Today I'm not emotional because I was more aggravated, everything that's transpired since that day. So one thing in life that's consistent is change. So I'm sure some of you grew up in East Hampton, Connecticut, when this is a very, very small town. I'm sure you guys have a twelve kids in class. If you haven't noticed, there's been a lot of change in East Hampton since when you guys were brought up. There's developments, many developments. There's Skyline Drive, there's Whispering Hills, there's there's Christine's Home, there's Seven Hills. All those developments are with children. People have moved here to start families. My development alone fills one school bus with over sixty kids. So every day, there's a huge problem with our development because we couldn't just fill one bus. And now we have, you know, the bus coming, so now I don't need to fill sixty kids. Sometimes it needs multiple trips, right? Our bus gets two buses, so it's always bus four will be late because I have to do two road trips. And not only filling, this town, people are moving here because it's desirable for kids. So that's how the taxes are, you know, that's what it's for, families. So if you guys think it's smart to not raise a budget for families that are moving here for that reason, I think it's, it's not a good idea. And maybe that's why I'm avoiding seeing it because I moved here, I lived in Portland. I wasn't in love with the way the Portland system started presenting teachers or anything in Portland. I moved here, built a home here on Skyline Drive. There's people fighting to get into that development because how many kids and families are in there? Because it's a place to raise your kids. So I recommend and think that you should send the budget back. I'm just saying, that's, that's why people come to this town.
Um, Mace Rizal, E. Colchester Avenue. I spoke at the last meeting and I plan to keep this short because quite frankly, I have a Macbeth and Modern World History test to study for. I really don't have a lot of time for this. But all I really want to address right now is the disrespect from some of the town council. In the previous meeting, the younger generation was treated with utter disrespect. I'm not here to disrespect, disrespect you all, because quite frankly, I don't enjoy fighting with fire with fire. But I want to say that if you want to represent the people, you need to represent everyone. Us as the younger generation are going to be the ones taking care of you and your not-too-far future. And also, there are many students that will be voting in the next upcoming election and we've been talking about who they're going to vote for and we know, let's, I'll be honest, we know who we're voting for. But I would also like to address the letter in the River East from a specific person. Though I do strongly support sending back this budget, this is nothing like the Vietnam War. There have been so, there has not been a single person to lose their life for this country or leave with permanent physical and mental health bu- problems because of this budget. If you want to pretend it's for us as students, you can at least send this budget back. Thank you.
Braden Kramer, one forty-six Comstock Trail. Um, I don't have much prepared today, but I just wanted to come here to state my piece. I have always believed, believed I've had an incredible and immaculate education at East Hampton High School and all of the other schools in this town. The staff and faculty at our schools have unparalleled talent, empathy, and passion in their profession. It is an abject and abhorrent idea that me and my fellow students are here for any reason that is not driven by our own independent thoughts and beliefs. We are this town's future constituents and we will have as much impact on it as you do now today. I am the oldest of four siblings and it would be an absolute travesty to me if they did not receive the same incredible quality of education that I have received throughout my schooling. It is what has made me the person I am today and I'm truly grateful for it. Education is the most quintessential privilege for us as fathers, mothers, siblings, and humans. I urge you to send the budgets back to our Board of Finance and invest in our future. Thank you.
I'm Nicole Carl, thirty-six, Charles Mary Drive, a junior at EHHS. I wasn't prepared to talk because I felt that you had heard it all. But as a student who had talked at the last meeting, I felt like I had to talk about the open letter that was addressed to Paul Smith. Um, I'm a student at EHHS and I can tell you that it is absurd to say that we were manipulated into giving speeches and standing up for what we believe in. Instead, instead, from the years in the East Hampton school system, we learned that this is our town and we can speak up and change the future. I know many of the students that talked, that are many of them my friends, and we were not manipulated into this thing. Our teachers talked about this situation in the most neutral way. And we stood up because they also taught us that together we can make a change. And our students are concerned and that is why we chose to talk. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Dean Markham, one Fairlon Avenue. As I was thinking about this, an old accounting profession adage that I was aware of came to mind. Figures don't lie, but liars do figure. Now, I'm not pointing that anyone in particular is a liar, but maybe there's some manipulation going on. The leadership of the town council majority would like those here in the East Hampton Public to believe that after public comments on April twenty-fifth, they needed two weeks to consider further action on the budget. Their opinions, as we all know, are limited. First, send the Board of Finance budget to referendum, either, either without change, or second, move dollars from one line item to another, but not increase the budget, and then sending it to referendum. Or three, send the budget back to the Board of Finance for reconsideration. But let's be serious, sending the Board of Finance adopted budget to referendum was always the plan and likely will be the action taken tonight. What is best for the quality of life in our town, for our children's education, for our public safety, all takes secondary position to how low you can keep the mill rate. It is appalling that the council leadership hasn't been truthful or treat the citizens of East Hampton and its employees with the dignity and respect they deserve. It would be refreshing that were to happen, but I guess it's not to be. So I see the only solution, let the budget go to referendum, vote it down, let it go back to finance and let that come forward again in the same fashion and vote that down and again and again and again until the message comes home. Thank you.
Um, Riley Briggs, nineteen Barton Hill. Um, I'm a little nervous because I'm going to be a little bit personal. I am here to talk about my experience with the teachers of East Hampton, especially East Hampton High School. Um, I personally have struggled with borderline personality disorder, anxiety disorder, and depression. And I don't know where I would be today without the amazing teachers, especially at the high school that I've had. Um, and even going back to third grade, when I had panic attacks in the middle of class, those elementary school teachers worked their butts off to be there for every single student, and I personally remember those days. I don't know where I would be without the teachers that I've had. And I know that there's plenty of other students who lean on these teachers and rely on these teachers. I know people personally, I know people from over line, I know people simply from talking, that we have some of the best, we have some of the best of the best, to be frank with you. And it would be a disservice to this town to let any of them go. I'd like to add in addition, to be frank, that the open letter to Paul Smith was frankly disgusting. And I personally would feel extremely embarrassed if I were to publish that. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Kelly Snyder, eighteen, Laurel Glen Drive. Um, I have three daughters in the school system and I am a kindergarten teacher. Uh, usually when I'm going to speak, I write a speech and I rehearse it like fifty times and I annoy my family by them listening to a hundred times, but I didn't. Tonight, I'm just kind of going on my thoughts as I sat and I listened to everyone. Um, I want to bring you back to Wednesday, April twenty-sixth, the day after the last town council meeting, and I want to share the perspective from a teacher. We gathered in the hallways, we were deflated, we were defeated, we were devastated. But we stuff those feelings down like teachers do every single day, no matter how they feel, no matter what's going on at home in their lives. We do that because we do what's best for our kids every single day. And I call them our kids because I don't just have three daughters. I have twenty-three kids this year. My students are my kids. I love them like my own. I teach them respect, kindness, compassion, and empathy like my own. I work tirelessly like all these teachers every single day to make sure that I am doing a service for these kids. So I just want to let you know that day, we gathered in the hallways, we cried, we spoke, we tried to lift each other up, and then we put on a smiling face like we do every single day, no matter how we feel. And we say, good morning, friends, nice to see you, and I'm giving my kindergarteners hugs and high five, and it's going to be a great day, even when I didn't feel that way, because that's what we do. We care, we work hard, we are innovative, we do more with less. God, do we do more with less. We are selfless, we are professional. We give and give and give until we can't give anymore. And then we still give more, even when we're at the point of exhaustion. I don't think one person in this room slept that Tuesday night. I know I didn't. I know many of my coworkers didn't. Because that's how much we care. You find people who care as much as teachers, staff that work in schools. We treat our students as a school family every single day. I worked as an educator at Hartford, Fairfield, Glassonberry, and now I have the privilege of working in East Hampton. And like I told Paul Smith the day he hired me, I said, I am so grateful to be working here because this feels like home to me. It feels like a family environment. I have never seen a community come together like this to fight and support their teachers, and I am, I am extremely grateful for each and every one. I implore you to do just like the teacher staff, administrators of the schools do every single day. Support the students, support the teachers and the staff of East Hampton. Thank you.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Sarah?
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me? Hello? Hello?
Tanya?
Hi, can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me? Hello?
Hi Sarah, I can hear you.
Oh, great.
But I don't think the room can.
Oh.
Yes.
Are you on, um, Zoom?
I'm on Zoom, so they can hear us.
On item five, presentations, none tonight, David?
Uh, no, sir.
No bids or contracts?
No, sir.
No resolutions or ordinance, policy, proclamations?
No, sir.
But I have made subcommittee reports. Do we have anything from the water committee? Yes.
Sure, let me just comment on behalf of the water committee quickly, uh, in the town managers.
In the town manager's report this, uh, this time, which was just distributed earlier today, there is some information from the town, uh, from the subcommittee of the council that's looking at water. In particular, we included some handouts and materials that were distributed at the last water meeting to kinda show where we're at in terms of progress there. It shows a little bit about the pressure zones and that sort of material. So that's available to the, to the public as well in my town manager's report. And we're, the primary piece that comes out of that is that we're moving towards a public information session this summer.
Thank you. Any other subcommittee reports?
I have a couple things. First of all, I wanna thank Mr. Cox and Mr. Hall for continuing the investigation regarding the tennis courts. The tennis courts at the high school, which were refurbished last year, suffered cracks in the playing surface during the last few months. They're scheduled to be repaired, and based on discussions with the town contractor, I'll view. These warranty repairs will occur after the tennis season in June. I have encouraged, I have encouraged Mr. Cox and Mr. Hall to continue conversations with the contractor and to see if in fact that warranty can be extended so that we can be assured that the tennis courts are going to be in the condition we expect them to be.
David, can you, for the next council meeting, have a report from the contractor to what the repair is going to be, what type? Is this gonna be a mill and an overlay, or what name do you care that? I just wanna see some cracks here, we're going on the center and all of a day.
Sure, I'll get that report for you.
Alright, thank you.
The second item, uh, the, uh, middle school roof committee has not met. But we did have a meeting, yours truly, and one other member. Ms. Kohler did sit in with the administration when they were, uh, working with the Department of Administrative Services. They began reviewing the extensive, uh, package that will be going out to bid. There were a number of things that the Department of Administrative Services asked us to reconsider or to look at differently. That is all in process, and we are hoping that that information will be finalized so that we can begin the process of going out to bid.
Also during that, I asked, you asked me to walk through middle school, see, uh, check out the roof and other items in there that need repair. And one of the things that came up was the fact new ocean rule and they have to put this railing around these skylights for two hundred and fifty-seven thousand. And Steve was gonna look into it and hope we had it prepared for us, is the possible building, just removing the skylights might be a cost savings and plus getting rid of the railings and putting lights in their place. So if we can...
Yeah, Stephen, I talked about that on Monday after your meeting, and he is pursuing that. Uh, and I think you also talked about moving a, uh, HVAC unit a little bit to avoid some costs there as well.
Yeah, there are two, uh, HVAC units that I think if you move, we'd save on the fencing, they'd make the, you have plenty of room.
Yeah, he's pursuing that. I think the, the state is okay with the change, so we're getting the quoting now.
Thank you. Any other reports? Here in, uh, discussion, the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four general government and board of education budget and capital plans. Who would like to start? Ask your questions away, let's, enough, we have some things I'd like to answer as we're going along. Yeah, uh, so, so, uh, thank you, Mr. Cox. He answered a lot of my questions, and I know I was ranting and dreading, we just sent it to you. So, because longer we waited to vote on it, I just kept getting another question in my head. A lot of times I just couldn't find it in the book because it was overlooked, man. Um, I guess I'll start with, uh, capital. Uh, so in the budget right now, there's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars requested for tennis court. I think it's with a component of the fifty thousand dollar pickleball court, eighty thousand dollars for basketball court. And I have to, um, for a tennis court for cost-saving purposes, why can't they get public works to do the replacement of that tennis court? If not, at least some of it, to rip it up and get it staged, try to save some money. Down money, and I know we're not professionals, or they're, they're professionals, but they're not professional tennis court makers. Right, I get that. Um, I just figured any type of way where we could save money, even if it's just a couple days of ripping it up again, tearing it out of there. Why not look at some of that?
Sure, and I think we can. I think that's basically the end message that I, I said. Uh, you're right, we build a lot of things with asphalt, and that's the basic, uh, structure of a tennis court or a basketball court or a pickleball court. But there are certain skill sets there that we don't typically have. Well, we can do certainly almost anything. I think we can look at those things that you've talked about. Certainly, we can handle demolition. It's just a matter of opportunity cost and what we want to, uh, what we will give up, if we give up anything to go ahead and do those things, if that's the council's desire. As Matt, the Public Works Director, and I will go ahead and look at what are the options there, uh, as we move forward.
Thank you. Um, so, since we're talking about the Sears Park and the courts. So last year, we approved the Sears Park position, the special revenue position. And the intended purpose of it was to create special revenue so we could do, uh, or help with capital investments and projects, something like pickleball court. I think the last time I saw back in, uh, March, there was over two hundred thousand dollars in that special revenue account. So I guess I was a little shocked that I hadn't gotten fallen into why, not saying dump the budget, not do everything, but why there would no assistance from that program in creating, the, the letter from the commission, uh, the Park and Rec Committee, they stated that this was four projects, and they even quoted like pickleball courts. I'm all for it, we've heard it throughout the last two years, we need a pickleball court, Sears Park in general needs to get updated. But if we have a special revenue program that's used, uh, or, uh, programs that use, places like pickleball courts that paid for by capital, um, and they're not putting into it, I have a real hard time then using those same programs to charging citizens to use something that they weren't contributing to specifically. So I guess, why, why isn't special revenue account used to any of those projects that Sears?
So the special revenue fund, uh, for Parks and Recreation handles all of the activity, all of the expenditures related to what I'll refer to as that business unit, right? So it takes and pays all of the, you alluded an employee there. A decision was made to take an employee that we were initially hoping to partially fund in there and move its entire costs in there. So all of the costs for that position are in that, in that budget, or rather, in that special revenue fund. And that's been that way for several months. In the past, the special revenue fund has contributed to various capital expenditures, whether it's as small as uh, doing, uh, upgrading the fall protection underneath or doing Sears Park, or rather Seamster Park playground. That was all funded through that special revenue fund. Where I'm going with this is, we absolutely know that we will go back to, uh, specific making, specifically making contributions out of the special revenue fund to support capital activities in uh, parks and recreation and expanding opportunities or improving opportunities in our parks. I think the reason we didn't make a proactive step to include some of those dollars in this year's capital plan is simply in experience with how well is it going with that person and the programming that they're generating. You're hearing it from the Park and Recreation Director. We're, we're doing a lot of programming. I hope that the community is seeing a lot of that programming. They're certainly participating in a lot of that program. I think we can get to that point. Uh, and once we have a better reconciliation of what this year looks like, that two hundred or three hundred thousand dollars that's sitting there now will start to go out the door in all of the summer programming that will go on, that has been paid for and registered for in the last several months. I wish I could put a definitive number on it. Maybe I can, once we start to close out the year and we start to know a little bit more about that, what the return is in that position, and we can add some of those dollars in, uh, in the future. And maybe reduce the ARPA contribution or whatever other funding sources we wanna use. Um, I just couldn't identify a specific amount to move towards it right now, um, which would be a little bit break from our practice. It's been smaller things, other things that have been done in the past uh, rather than a specific contribution to capital.
Right, I remember we did a couple thousand dollars to the, I think it was the boat launch last time.
There's, but that came from a specific boat launch. When people buy a sticker for the boat launch, we segregate that money. So that was specific boat launch money.
I still have a moral on with the town. In, in a way, making money off of its residents by using resources that its residents paid for, and then now not putting anything to it at all. And it's not a little bit, we went through this, it would be with benefits and everything, it was like eighty thousand dollars for that person's salary. And like you said, I, I forgot what it was, it was at least two hundred and thirty thousand dollars that we had there, just to not even have half of that paid for. And I'm trying to find other ways to like save money, that's what I was talking about, part of the work step in it, or helping out some of the work. Morally, that seems crooked for the town to charge someone, and there's a special revenue account for projects like this.
Well, I'd be, I'd be happy to continue, you know, to work those numbers up and see if we can identify what we're talking about in terms of what I'll refer to as the excess or the profit that comes from, that can be devoted to those other things that we've done in the past. And I can certainly continue to work.
The renovations, I think, and we have time until everything's built and renovated, but.
Sure, absolutely.
I think until there's more contributions, I, I'd be very against them charging anything. Again, we're, we're much down the road from anything built, but I definitely wanna bring that one back up. This has to do with education, um, and I'm not sure. So, uh, my answer was, uh, or question was answered earlier. I asked, just, uh, I guess just a general question of how many staff members are funded by grants in school? And I guess that, the only reason I was asking that one, and going on the EdSite website that I know the superintendent uses, uh, and looking at the statistical data of the schools and the breakdowns and just seeing it and burping where that was coming from, I, I can't. According to that website, it said that we added seventeen positions last year, said staff positions.
Okay.
As I found earlier, and then if you break it down, instead of just as a whole of the town, on the school side, you break down the schools, it said we added twelve. Um, the email I answered back said one of the positions was fully funded, uh, through grants, psychologists, that made sense. So according to the big list, there's still sixteen staff positions, uh, that according to the state have been created last year, and it's not teachers, there has not been a new teacher position there at all, but it was still staff in general. So I guess, uh, and that was like the late, late question I had. I don't know if anyone's able to answer.
Sure. Let me invite the superintendent up to, to give you a better answer on that. I think that we've given you some of that answer. I don't know whether we can.
Some of it, uh, thanks for following your, uh, for the grant side of it.
Sure.
Um, but yeah, so then just on the bigger side, going around that website, and, and the book that was given to us, uh, I think said we have like two hundred and fifty-seven staff members, and then like I said, it breaks it down, there are like two fifty-seven, three oh-two, and three forty-seven. So I'm just curious, which is the real number, and did we actually add sixteen new staff positions last year?
Sure. I thought I saw the superintendent walking towards me. Here he comes.
Brandon, I can't speak to what's on EdSite, so I stand by what's in our book at this point.
Okay.
I haven't seen the EdSite. I, you know, you're always welcome to call me in advance with the, with the questions. I didn't realize you were referring to EdSite.
This was, it was, you answered half of it earlier this.
Right, Karen sent you, sent you the, the information.
It's in the back, right. So this was just a later one, I was going, like when I showed up early here, I was counting out of the book the staff positions, and like I, I saw where it gets to nineteen thousand dollars per student. But break down all that and compare around the towns, very useful site.
Yeah.
So that was the last one, where it's just a different count, and it does say, I guess I, I printed it out, but like I said, I'm not gonna speak to, you've added more teachers, we need to get rid of teachers, absolutely not. But there is, uh, twelve or two non-certified paraprofessional instructors, according to the state site. Uh, there are seven more non-instructible, non-certified other staff providing, so I guess, is, is that real?
I, I, I'm sorry, I just haven't seen what's on, on EdSite. I said, I, I do know that we have added, uh, powers and interventionists this year in this current budget, but I, I can't speak to what's on, on EdSite. Is an interventionist like we do, you know, a little bit specific power title, so I, I, I just can't speak to how they're categorizing it.
Okay. So would you say that these numbers are wrong?
No, I would not.
But I, uh, when you got, it was the question we, Brandon, I didn't realize that you were thinking of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. I thought you meant last year being this year in relation to next year's budget. EdSite also includes bus drivers, even though they don't work for us directly, and cafeteria employees. And in both cases, there were significant increases last year because of the, uh, program changes. But not all of them would even necessarily be operating budget staff. But we would have to look at exactly what you were looking at. I thought you were talking about this year, the next year.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Thank you, Paul.
Thanks.
Anyone else have any questions to comment, or you, Mr. Cox, or you have more? Uh, you know, scattered brain, I think I'm good for now. Please, someone else.
I, I would just like to compliment, uh, Mr. Cox and Mr. Smith. I appreciate all the questions that came from the council. And I also appreciate and fully understand the amount of time it took to prepare those responses. Uh, I appreciate the information, and I'm hopeful that, uh, this information will be shared with the Board of Directors.
Eric? Any comments? No. Allison? I'd like to address a couple items, um, the inflation information. I knew that was gonna come forward because it always does when it's tight. But yet, for as many years as I've been sitting here, we had negative inflation, no one gave us any money back, nor do they ever want to talk about inflation. Yes, we all know it's high. But if you wanna go back and look at the years when it was low, we did nothing to adjust it then either. The roof, somebody brought the roof that, with the leaking, we are on that, takes time, we're getting that fixed. I never knew there were any heating issues in the building. That's the first time somebody told me they had to sit there and hold plastering. The cost of the budget, them going down, is brought up, how it costs thirty thousand dollars because the budgets went down five times. Well, I need to tell you, the reason they went down five times because they were all too high. When they finally got reduced is when they passed. The questions, happy to have the questions on there, but I also like to remind you and give you a little history. Every time, for three consecutive years, when the questions were on there, every budget came back too high. We did nothing to address them, so the questions got released. Don't shake your head, sir, that's factual information, you can look it up. Are we even able to do questions? We'll have to check. There's a tiny issue with the questions. We've had enough time to print down the ballot, we have to check with the registrars. Last year, we tried to do it. We tried to do it last year. And that's all the comments I have at this time, which leads us to, yeah, I, I, I replay my time, I'm sorry. You know, I would, if possible, also like to see that on there. Because if it turns out no too low, then the public has spoken, and it is what it is. Too high, it will get tight. Air warning. To add in the general government, the board of education budget and the, uh, capital budget, was it too high, too low question? I have a second on that motion.
Motion is second, agent's question on this motion. Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. We had a discussion, let's bring us into the action.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty four town general government budget in the amount of seventeen million nine hundred thousand one hundred and thirty seven dollars. Producing three thousand two hundred and seventy seven dollars in the new town hall building equipment maintenance repair line item. One thousand nine hundred two dollars from the collector of revenue, other purchase services line item. Uh twenty thousand dollars from the transfer station refusal service line item and thirty thousand dollars for lieutenant position.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and second, a discussion on the motion.
The council didn't share with us why those couple fee deals are.
So I went through. And exactly, um. Definitely reason the first couple uh was because. Try to hold to the two percent of what was mandated or what was needed, and so that was the. Uh cost of uh salaries, insurance, and then the other. Um I screwed up what they called, but the contracted computer apartments here, every every. One second, the security software, thank you, the security software, but it has to do with that, uh give you the name of it. Software maintenance agreements, we need a line items have, and I'm looking at public works right now. And any software maintenance agreement or anything that was needed for the departments or the individual departments actually function, so. Started there is the three necessities. Depending on where it was, um. Fire department, because a lot of equipment that they need to upgrade, whatever, uh like we're talking about IT services went up, but that was due to uh. Software, not more accidents in the future, right, a lot of that is deemed necessary, so holding to the two percent on those two line items. Or those three line items, correct, uh. Actually tell them within the two percent. And then uh for the lieutenant's position, uh I I at least feel like we knew very well. By the police here in the town of East Hampton, any type of any payment, any type of help training that they want, they need, there's never a question about it. Now, since I've been here, and I know. This has been a long time, or uh. Always a long battle. But it does, we come to the point where we would feel like we actually need seventeen police officers or more in this town, I heard Lou uh the chief. During the board of finance presentations, described how he wanted at least twenty in the town, I just don't feel the need for that. When other surrounding towns like Holchester, who are much bigger than us, have. Many less than us, I think they're about thirteen or fourteen full-time police officers. And it does become to the point where are we over policing, over staffing, I definitely.
Right.
Want every equipment that they have, the top new, and there's no question about it, they wanted a police truck last year, yeah, we know we're starting, that's a different story. But. Never hold back any equipment to make sure they can do their job effectively, I know we've tossed around the idea of constables coming in, there's a lot of back and forth was. You know, taking some of that overtime off, but there seems to be a little pushback on training constables to helping with the overtime and taking some ease off of some of our policemen. That's where I uh got to that.
Uh Mr. Goff, are these your ideas? So these are newer ideas, have you discussed any of these with? Mr. Cox or the other department people, but this is going to affect. Is that a yes?
Yes.
You did?
Yes.
And they agreed with you?
And that's why I didn't do just straight cuts to like IT when we were holding everyone to two percent.
What you're proposing.
No, but holding back.
We cannot talk with the department heads, we talk with David, we tell him what we like, we tell David our wishes. Do the department heads run this town?
Uh then I'll ask Mr. Cox. Mr. Cox. Can you share with me the conversations you had with the department heads regarding the cuts that Mr. Goff is proposing?
We uh earlier tonight spoke with the. With the chair and Mr. Goff about some of the proposed cuts. Uh and encouraged them to change one of them from software to something else. Uh but the conversations we've had are um minor otherwise. Uh we know that there has been discussion regarding uh lieutenant in the past, and uh I know that. We have to make, we have to follow what the the council decides in terms of uh how it wants to staff the community. Um the other two cuts or the other cuts that were made to the other departments, I understand those. Uh and those are ones that I think I can stand by certainly and will work with uh to make them happen appropriately.
And is it correct, Mr. Cox? That this conversation occurred between six and six thirty this evening?
It is, yes.
And, no, no, that's that's not totally true. I told Mr. Cox at the beginning, the beginning of the budget's policy. That we will not put and extend staffed, and that was the feeling last year by the majority of this council, if you remember the vote, I know it was last year, but we voted, we do not want a lieutenant's position. More often, Mr. Right, the budget that got shot down in flames had the lieutenant's position, if I can. Resurrect your memory to that budget, so that's why that position is out.
You see, I frankly would like the public to be able to make that decision. Matter of fact, I prefer that all of this go back to the board of finance so that they can review. What they have learned since, reflect on what everyone has said, and then come back with a proper response. That's going to provide a budget that we fully believe is necessary in order to run this community. And respond.
No, I got a little lost there, I was sure if you want to go to referendum and let the community decide, or I want to go to board finance and let them decide, but I think I got it. Okay, with that, we have a motion of.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question before you vote, I apologize, Mr. Counsel.
Discussion.
Yes.
That's been in there. I'm not worried about equipment. I'm worried about personnel. I'm worried about where do we want our police department to go? We wanted a competitive police department? I certainly do. That means manpower, not a piece of equipment, that means manpower. You have a good chief. You won't have a good chief. One person can only do so much. The demands of that department. I don't even want to begin to express, you take too much time. He needs help. I can't believe you would just. Who do you want running that department? Now I'm going to tell you what's going to happen. I've been in accreditation games for a very long time. It starts out good. It's a set of standards. Everybody likes it to meet. That tells you the quality of the firm, you need the standards. But somewhere down the line, somebody says. In the state, gee. You know, East Hampton's got an accredited ap- apartment, uh department. Money, tunes, pounds. And it's coming down the road for the police department, it's now not this accreditation process. That it's taken hold. East Hampton has to be out front of this. One person cannot do it. Not going to happen. You're going to have, uh just like with the schools, when the schools went through accreditation. A lot of resources had to be put in there. Same thing with the police department, you cut East Hampton. For dollars. That's wrong. The people have spoken at two meetings, you're totally disregarding. We. You 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 made these cuts. What, two people? When I got X amount out here. Saying something different. That's wrong. You should send this boat budget back to the board. To the finance board. Let let the people decide. There's a lot of things, I've sat here, what, twelve years, there's a lot of things I think. It should be this way or that way. You know what, I've learned to bend. And you know why? They've changed my mind in some ways. And they put the bill. Not make any cuts in any areas.
Uh I'd like to start by saying that, I got to tell you, I appreciate all the passion that was in this room. Everybody came up as well, students that were nervous, everybody did a very good job on it. Um and also I'd like to talk a little bit about. The jury did talk about this lieutenant position, and Councilman Brown was just speaking about, um. And I I agree with Councilman Brown on that. That uh I think the chief, we have a great chief. Not a good chief, we have a great chief. And uh. The man needs a little help. They're not asking for a lot of money on that. Uh and that's coming from a grandson of a state trooper, and uh that means a lot. And I think that man needs some help, and also I'd like to revisit this ambulance because um. I always said that, you know, uh the neighbors help the neighbors, I brought that up quite a few different times, and uh we've got a good ambulance here. And uh we need to keep that going. Thank you.
If I may, just quickly, uh I I apologize, I just need to make a clarification and make sure that. The number you're, you have recited, which admittedly I gave you earlier, may be incorrect. To clarify your cuts. Three thousand two hundred seventy seven dollars out of the town hall. Subsidies, the town hall, the building. Um one thousand nine hundred two out of the collector's office.
Yes.
Twenty thousand dollars out of the transfer station.
Yes.
And thirty thousand dollars out of the police department regular patrol.
Yes.
Okay, with my apologies, I will tell you that I gave you the wrong number earlier when I did that math, garbage in, garbage out. Uh the total would be, if those were your cuts and only your cuts. Seventeen million nine hundred forty thousand one hundred thirty seven dollars.
But like to amend my motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty four town general government budget in the amount of seventeen million nine hundred forty thousand one hundred and thirty seven dollars. With. Afterment costs.
Second or a minute or second, second, thank you.
Thank you, I apologize.
Okay, so we have a motion. On the floor.
And Mr. Karen, it is just on the the cuts that Mr. Goff. Has acknowledged, is that correct, the motion?
This motion is on. The town down, so town general, sending it to.
So so. Then we're just going to ignore the requests from the ambulance association, really? I I was kind of shocked when the board of finance did that, uh that's why I would like the budget to go back, I I really think. The uh the ambulance association needs those funds. Uh and and we know what great work they do. And I really have a problem now adding more cuts to what we've been given, when we're not even affording the. Folks on the board of finance another opportunity, that's all I'm asking, I'm asking them to have another opportunity to look at what they did. Okay, let them review the additional information we have. Let them reflect on all the conversation we had, and my hope is that they would respond differently. So I really have a problem, I can't support. What you're proposing, I I I just can't.
Okay. So with that being said, any more comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say five by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
The fiscal year twenty twenty four board of education budget in the amount of thirty five million six hundred and eight thousand six hundred and fifty five dollars.
A motion of a second. Second. A discussion. Okay, no discussion, although although the favors, they go, it's been signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
August, May twenty third, beginning at six P M. In the town hall for the purpose of. Considering that the. Board of Education twenty twenty four budget. It's immediately adjourned consideration budget to referendum on Tuesday, May thirtieth, in accordance with the state statute, town charter, section four four one.
Motion of a second.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye. I. Opposed?
Next one, I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty four capital improvement plan in the amount of eight hundred nine thousand five hundred dollars. Contingent on final determination of board of finance.
We're going to make a second. Should I get? Motion is setting a session.
Uh Mr. Chairman, this, uh it's my understanding, some of those funds coming from the American Recovery Act.
Correct.
Uh in the past, I know that we as a council have. Uh, in the past, I know that we as a council have voted on those items as a, as a, as a board.
Right.
Uh. Will we be doing that prior to the public conversation?
We're approving, then we're gonna have a meeting. We're sending forward the one meeting to get, they get, to get cuts, the only thing that's actually attached in a budget is that eight hundred thousand. The armpits, money, we can sit there and decide, you guess you want to do or no you do not want to. They've already basically been technically pulled out of the capital set aside. Any more discussion? All in favor, two five by saying aye.
Aye.
Um, opposed?
Uh, yes, sir, I, I'm. What is your intent with, as it relates to the general fund budget, you had a motion that failed? Or the town operations budget, you had a motion that failed? I think you could still have conversation on that and determine whether there's an action that can be taken.
Yeah, at this point in time. Well, because it had, I mean, at this point. We got two motions that failed, we have the original one. You need a motion to send it back and that failed, now we had a motion to prove it and that failed, so we're requiring that us to send it back.
The only people that can send it back is someone who didn't vote for originally the first time, which would be. And. Since it failed, I made the motion and.
Are you talking about reconsidering your motion to, the motion that was made to send it back to the Board of Finance?
Yes, the only.
So the people that could, the, those of you that voted against that motion, which caused it to fail. Were, are the ones that would be able to bring it back to the floor. So one of you who made that. Who voted in the opposition to that motion, would have to make a vote, a motion to reconsider that original motion.
Here's an order, so, kinda stuck there on that one, so I make a motion to send the twenty twenty-four. Town general governments back to Board of Finance.
May I buy a point of order for you?
Yes.
Your motion should be, I apologize, your motion should be, you would make a motion to reconsider the original vote. Or the original motion to send the ma- the matter back to, to, uh, the Board of Finance. In that instance, assuming someone seconds that, and you take a vote in the affirmative, then that original motion is back on your floor. For you to reconsider.
Make a motion to reconsider the vote to send back the twenty twenty-four. Town and general government budget back to the Board of Finance.
Or reconsider, you have a second on that motion.
Second.
Can he second it?
Actually, he can, the second can be anybody.
We have a motion in session, second, any discussion?
That, is that, that is the only other option? Unless one of, someone who has previously voted no was gonna re-bring up. The budget to vote on it. And I don't think Mr. Brown are gonna bring it up in since. Walking, him just said no. Uh. Just get voted down again, that's, because you would be the only other person who could make a motion on that, and so we shut down. Like, bring that up in the motion, or space, so we can. There you go, yeah, that's the only option.
I'm just asking, you, there couldn't be an alternate motion hypothetically to send it through as proposed by the Board of Finance? Because he, he proposed.
Cuts.
Cuts.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but alternatively being, that, that motion failed, could there be a motion?
Send it through to the community as recommended by the Board of Finance? In my opinion, that would be in order, the chairman has to make that determination whether that would be in order.
It, it could be, but it has to be by one of the people who voted up.
Uh, I, I'm not so sure, because you're really, it's a whole new motion.
I, I think it's.
A whole new matter.
Okay, well.
I guess that is the third option.
Yeah, so. When somebody.
You do have the motion to reconsider on the floor, just so you know.
Get a second on that, I think we got a second.
Mr. Reich did second that.
Your motion, and a second on the floor, any discussion on that motion? You know, we do also, can look at another option.
Can Mr. Cox does explain what we're voting on?
Reconsider. Your motion to the last meeting, to send it back.
Thank you.
The other option that Eric brought up. What was that, sir? I said the other option.
Talk about right now, we got another motion right on the board right now, so we need to go to this.
Unless you would want to have that conversation as. A means to inform the council on whether they want to reconsider the original motion, or simply. Fail that to come back to the option of just sending the. Board of Finance recommended budget on, that's really what you have in terms of discussions.
The budget currently right now, so we can discuss the third option that passed, and the Board of Finance.
Okay, so we've done a discussion on that, Tim, what's your idea for that?
I'm a little bit lost, I'm not gonna lie.
None of our cuts, they'll be in there, the, the twenty thousand, the transfer.
Way they wrote it in there.
So we're voting up, we should send it back to Board of Finance, go right now.
Another option. This is BS. David?
Yes, sir.
Chief still here?
I believe he is.
You rescind, we talked about you rescinding your motion.
Yes.
To.
Rescinding it back, that's, that's.
I just, just so we're, I think we're all clear. Made the motion to potentially send it back to Board of Finance, the general government budget, because he thought that was the only option. After asking some questions, we find out that is not the only option, you then received it, rescinded his motion. At the potential of having a motion. Which, if I may, I wanted to make it this time. To send the motion, uh, to send the general government budget. Through, as, or proven as proposed by the Board of Finance.
This is a motion, or go to second. A motion is second. We're in discussion on this motion. Basically, it's as is from the Board of Finance.
The only comment I'll make is to chair, question is that I'm, I'm extremely disappointed, uh. I'm still stunned that we're, we're not going to have the Board of Finance reconsider the board of that. We wouldn't want, with the additional information we received over the last two weeks.
But Mr. Reich, you're getting off track, we're talking about this motion.
Completely misread what it means to have a bull, bull, you are out of control with this meeting. Bullying everybody until you get your way, it's ridiculous, you're, be ashamed of yourself. Balls and stand up for their kids, that's what it looks like.
I, I understand. I, I understand where we stand with the Board of Education budget. I'll actually infer to anyone here who vote no is too low. But, the question I have, and the problem I have, is that. We're not gonna have the Board of Finance at least consider. The other cuts that they made, in particular, the ambulance association, or really? Why wouldn't we do that? The other question that I have, has nothing to do with this motion, so I can wait, this is chairman's thing, you're lying. Did I understand that we're gonna go to vote, uh. To have a town meeting to vote on the Board of Ed budget, when in fact, then we'll go to vote twice if we. Once we finalize the. Town government budget? Is that possible? I know it's possible, is that, could that be a reality? To the cutters of the cutters, that's absolutely passe night, why, why would?
Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So with that. I would like to make another motion to go through for the setting of the meeting.
I think it would be appropriate, since you were specific in the first one.
Would, would it be better taking other motions, covering all the department or all the budgets, or again, just specifically for the. Town general government budgets?
I, I think it's fine to just do the town general government, that you would also do that at the same time.
Okay, and here I make a motion to direct that a town meeting we called for Tuesday, May twenty-third, beginning at six P M in the town hall. For the purpose of considering the town's fiscal year twenty twenty-four budgets. Correction, to the twenty twenty-four town general government budget into immediately adjourned consideration of the budgets to referendum on Tuesday, May thirtieth. In accordance with state statute and Town Charter, section four, point one.
Have a second, that motion? Motion is second, any discussion on that?
So, we're gonna have.
This is all our standard procedure, we're having the town meeting, which we always have to have. It's on both budgets now, we didn't split it, we're not having two different dates. Any other second, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, thank you.
By their day, starting the possible action on twenty twenty-three's schedule of fees and sharing charges.
Uh, certainly, yeah. So according with the council's policy, uh, adopted about a year ago, you've begun to take an annual review of the codes of the, uh. Schedule of charges and fees for the town. Uh, this year, the staff is really, uh, focused on making, just making a couple of proposed amendments. Uh, mostly related to changes in costs, uh, and observations of areas where maybe the town is a little behind. Uh, one is related to, uh, police department private duty services. And we've recommended some, uh, three dollar increase to those fees essentially, uh, to make sure that we cover the cost of, uh. The anticipated cost of officers in the future. Uh, we've also proposed that we increase from the, what I'll refer to as nominal fee of. Of five dollars to the less nominal fee of twenty-five dollars for a, for getting a demolition permit. And then the last item that, uh, staff is asking the council to consider is whether it wants to add. The twenty-six cents per thousand, uh, education fee that we pay to the state on top of our. E- existing building permit fees, or do we want to continue to pay that out of the collections that we make? So those are the three, uh, by way of grouping, uh, recommended changes.
Karen, allow, how does the state law with twenty-six cents?
Exactly came from, um, in relation to our permit fees, I don't feel that. We're low in any. Way, shape or form, so I think leave it as is.
So you would reject the twenty-six cent?
What about the four dollars and seventy-six cents?
Uh, I would take the answer on the twenty-six cents to apply to them all, right now our fee is twelve fifty. I added the twenty-six cents on our per thousand cost as well, so. I would take that comment to apply to both. If in fact, that's, if the council agrees.
How much does that actually, that make any difference, like, how much do we actually spend?
So we spend, uh, between fifteen hundred and two thousand dollars a quarter.
Wow, oh, that's a lot more than I thought it would.
We have a lot of building activity going on. Well, you're right, it is about what we get back in this year.
Everyone go with that?
Um, in this trailer?
Maybe dollars, I think?
And underneath it's just trailer, thirty dollars.
Yeah, that's sort of, um, leaving structure is a double action, dump trailer, which is.
Right.
Rather large.
Someone did like coming with a pickup truck, and we're going on it like that, right, the dump trailer.
Okay, so.
When they're loading up, dumpster, one load, they. That they have a motion for those things?
I have notes that we include in the pages. Uh, for.
Minus, yeah.
Minus twenty-six.
The motion on the floor is, have a second on that.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
I'd like the eight thousand dollars that Mr. Cox, uh, talked about. In the coffers. Here we're cutting, and here we have opportunity to bring money into the town, and you're saying no.
Or just have people save it in their back pocket to begin with, when they apply for a permit.
Please, town manager's report, are the items a highlight?
Um, as I mentioned, the town manager's report came out today, my apologies for, uh, for that. Um, I really, the main item I would have, uh, identified for folks was the report that we gave for the. Uh, water subcommittee, so I, I will, uh, leave it at that. Uh, I might also just mention, my apologies, I'll just mention that we are working on the village center, uh, project, I. Did note that in there, uh, sadly, the final estimates are coming in a little bit higher, so we're looking at our alternatives there. We're exploring some other grant opportunities to try and get that whole thing funded, uh, and be able to move it ahead. Nevertheless, it's at the D O T for them to look at and sign off on the portions that they need to deal with, so.
They haven't gotten that push yet?
No, they just got it not that long ago, because we had to do, make some updates and some changes to it before they got it.
That was my question, to see if that was the same exact plan we voted on originally.
Well, it's got all the details now, and so it's got all the details of braids and, and changes to side one.
You're seeing that they didn't even allow any parking on the street at all, anything, intersection, okay?
Yep.
And appointments, we have some tonight.
Uh, yes. Chair, like to make a motion. Uh, appoint Jason Hartley, uh, the conservation, conservation weight commission. Uh, from an alternate to a full position. And Scott Purple of the same commissions from a full to alternate. They express their concerns, they will both want to be there, Mr. Purple. He's a personal, so he can't give his full attention, but does want to be a help when he can. So we asked for the recommendation of who, which alternate we should swap with.
I would recommend that, right?
I saw the motion is second, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Ayes.
I.
Uh, one more.
Go ahead.
Uh, I can make a motion to appoint, uh, Peter Strickland to the Connecticut Anti-Fuels Order Advisory Committee. Um, this one's kind of last. Um, this one's kind of last minute. Uh, this came with a big recommendation of the current member uh, seated for retiring. They're doing a uh, ceremony this upcoming week and they would like to uh, announce Peter. I think the last member, so I can speak to it and appoint him.
I'll second that.
Good. The motion is second, any discussion? Never heard of it.
So they, the, the committee in general uh, continues to oversee the storage of the, of the spent fuel rods at the location. Um, in hopes that eventually they get moved to the permanent federal storage facility that I'm sure is actively under construction.
Sure. Um, motion is second, any discussion? Um, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Taxpayer funds.
I move that we approve the taxpayer funds of one thousand three hundred forty dollars and eighty-five cents.
Uh, motion, no, the second.
Second.
The second, any discussion? Here are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And fourteen, public remarks. Same as the floor, please upstate your name and address and connect with the council.
Pete Worma, thirty-two Oak Mill Road. Mark. Hello. And town council, hello. It's really nice to actually see the majority of eyes right now because the most, most of the night when people were talking, all you're doing is looking down at your desk. Extremely disrespectful. People come up here, we're waiting our time wanting to be heard, just like you want to be heard, right? You don't want people shaking their heads at you. Look at them when they're talking to you. It's respectful. It's disgusting what's been going on. You would rather talk about it outside of here. You'd rather not look at people being disgusted with your choices. But when you make choices, you have to deal with your choices and the consequences of people being potentially upset with you. I appreciate Kevin and Pete for your trying to keep this pushing it back to the finance board. Essentially, that's all we were asking to have done. Yet it seemed like there was a huge power trip from one side of the aisle. I do appreciate, I'm seeing eyes right now, but basically the whole time, nobody was paying attention to people talking up there besides our two Democrats.
I also voted.
This time, last time, not so much. I do appreciate that right now.
There was another conversation going back. Sorry.
I am addressing my comments. I just think it's disgusting and I really hope that you guys have a hard time sleeping tonight.
Andrew Berry, twenty-five Calley Brook Road. I want to apologize for yelling. That was disrespectful. But what I find even more disrespectful is the fact that you went against everybody here who came up and took their time out of their day to come and speak against this budget cut. Like I, I don't, I don't know what else to say. I mean, it all has been said. You guys just can't listen to us, the students, the teachers, the parents of this town, everybody who lives here is against us and I, I don't even know what to say. Like, I'm just done. I'm done.
Hi, Jennifer Palmer, three way down. Um, I want to say, I want to ask, I don't know if I'm able to speak to Mr. Fox, you know, you all just made a motion to reopen what the, what I guess failed for you all as far as bringing the town budget. Can you reopen the Board of Ed budget? Like, could they reopen it because they voted yes? And reopen that to so that maybe possibly it could go back to Board of Finance? I mean, I don't understand why, why it cannot like, why can't, why can't that be on the table? Why can't we send this budget? That obviously the entire town does not agree with. Why can't we send that back to the Board of Finance? And just say, what's up? Can we take a look at this again? We're not asking you to say yes, no, maybe so. Just send it back. So is, is that able for a motion to be opened to revote on that? Since we just revoked it on the town, I'm just asking. I, I am not in your position. I don't want to be in your position. I've been asked to be in your position. I said no. But can, can it be reopened even though you just reopened another motion? May, may I ask why? I'm just curious of why. No, 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 no. I allow them to speak because I really would like to know. It was just the town budget that did not pass for you all. I mean, passed to go forward.
For, for the state of explaining to.
Yeah, please.
Because the line item and the item on agenda when we voted on it and how we moved it forward.
Mm-hmm.
That's why we didn't reopen it. We voted on the general government. And that just, that motion failed. Went on to item two. That motion passed with the affirmative to go forward to referendum.
Mm-hmm.
Because the top item failed was why we need to bring it back over. That was the reason.
But it failed for the opposite side. So, I mean.
When you have, when you have an affirmative motion, don't, you can't bring it back up.
But okay, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm maybe dumb. Sorry. Um, so with the, so the town budget passed, correct? Then it was going to go back to Board of Finance, correct? It passed, so.
We go to referendum.
To go to referendum. So that has to go to referendum. What did the Board of Finance, I mean, I'm sorry, the Board of Education, what did that?
To go to referendum.
So they both, the same exact thing. But you reopened the town budget, correct? I'm just, I, I just want to know because.
Because it got voted down the first time and it was just stagnant at that point. It wasn't going to go anywhere.
Okay, because you guys voted yes to go for, for the Board of Ed. But, okay, maybe I'm dumb. I don't know, but I just, I'm not quite sure how.
I'm sorry to be.
No, 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 thank you. Um. I, no, I mean, I appreciate it. But I mean, but I'm just, I just, I mean, I'm sure my three minutes are a long time up, but um, I just would like to know why, oh, there it goes. Um. I would like to know why you, I just, I don't get how one motion can be reopened and you can't reopen another one. Because one failed and one didn't. I mean, I don't, I don't know. I just, it's a shame. Because I voted for all you guys to be quiet. I'm not a Democrat. I apologize, Pete. I apologize, Kevin. I, I, I'm, I'm ashamed. I really got, honestly, I'm ashamed. I'm a, I, I'm an employee of these kind of public schools and I can't believe this is happening. And I mean, they packed house, so.
Brian Corvo, forty-two Sunrise. Um. I guess to start out with, at, at least some of you guys that are Republicans broke some ranks and showed some leadership. Um. There was a letter in the River East that mentions quoting it a little bit turmoil, distrust and condemning the leadership of this community. And it mentioned showing disrespect maybe to the five of you guys on here. Um. I'm gonna say this as somebody who was a Republican at one point and still considers myself uh, conservative on many points. Respect is earned and none of you five at the last meeting showed anything close to leadership. Um, none of you learned, earned that respect. You guys are leaders. Phil, look at me, or Mark. You can't. You know why? Because you know what I'm saying is true. You guys don't have what it takes to be leaders. You breached your duty as a real leader. Smirk at me. You're cute. If you guys were real leaders, you'd be able to do the right thing, even when it's unpopular with your side. You'd be able to say, you know what? This is about twenty to thirty dollars a month for most people in town. And it's not popular. But it's the right thing to do. Because here's the thing, you're gonna say, I'm a conservative. You know what conservatives really do? They look after the assets of the town. They have a vision. Leaders have a vision beyond themselves. They're gonna take some, take us somewhere good. The only vision I've seen from you guys and why I thank God I'm not a Republican anymore is you're gonna have low taxes. You're gonna lower taxes, even if it means we're gonna be le- living in a cheap dump. And you know what? No one gets excited about twenty to thirty dollars a year for it. That's not packing this place. You failed the schools, you failed the police, you failed the first responders, you failed seniors. You failed just about everyone in town and the people, some of the people are gonna cheer you on and go, yeah, you really stuck it to them. You failed them too and they don't even know it. Because their property values are gonna plummet. You're not doing anything to attract business here. Cause every business wants to locate somewhere where they're cutting police and fire and with poor education, right? That's what places look for. Leaders have a vision. You guys lack it. You're not conservative. Y- y- you don't look after resources. You don't look after people. You failed. Over, like I said, the price of a beer, the price of a, a, a beer and wings and a burger somewhere. And I understand times are tough. There's inflation. Things cost a lot of money. So, thank you. Real, a real conservative would be in here saying, we have a great asset in this town. We're gonna take care of it. We're gonna preserve it. What do you think the remaining teachers in the back of the room think of you guys right now? Are the remaining town employees or the remaining, the, the police you are actively not helping? And you're gonna go back to your constituents? Who are, by the way, all of us and go, you know what, guys? Saved you twenty bucks this month. Saved you thirty bucks this month. Way to go. Way to go. Your legacy is gonna be making this a cheap, uneducated dump because that's where you want to take it. Fortunately, and I don't think anything's gonna come this far in this town again, because you put everybody on high alert. Nothing's gonna leave Board of Finance without an equal group of people raising hell, I'd say. Not for a long time. And this budget's gonna go to referendum and it's gonna get voted down because he electrified a bunch of people or against him. It's gonna get voted down again and we're doing the same thing we did a couple of years ago. And then we're gonna vote you out in November. So enjoy the gavel while you have. The other person who's voting out, who I believe is often running him on the Board of Finance. In her letter, she wrote, Board of Finance and Town Council must provide for health, safety, education for all residents. This is the really rich part. Hard choices need to be made at all levels of East Hampton. We should all take time to understand what is at stake and how much money will be coming out of our wallets. Hard times call for difficult choices. Make the right one for you and your family. I know what my choice is. You got a quality school system that, like I said before, I taught at private schools where people are paying sixty thousand dollars a year to send their kids. We have an equal school system and you guys want to get rid of it to save twenty to thirty dollars a month on, and then say you're smart and you did the right thing. I don't know. Congratulations. I'm, I'm I'm glad. Enjoy the chairs while you got them. Enjoy the gavel. Write some letters. Do whatever you do. God bless. We'll be here.
William Faber, forty-five Schoolhouse Lane. Now, Mr. Phil Howard, correct me if I'm wrong, but your comment to me telling me to stop shaking my head at you, it might not have been to me, but as far as I could tell, I was the only person in this room shaking the head. I find that completely unacceptable because let me remind you, sir, that this is my town hall as much as it's yours and all the people who sit on your committee. I would like you thank you. You are not the committee of public safety in the seventeen eighties, friends. You're not going off and beheading people. I don't know if you'd like to or not, but heaven knows. I mean, honestly, you are not the rulers of this town. We are. The people are. This is our town hall, our citadel of democracy. This is our education. Where do you want to put us? I mean, honestly, my friends at the last meeting, at this meeting, who were, had the courage to come up and tell you they have mental health problems, who broke down in front of you, we can't even get them to join bell ringer news. And they're coming up in front of you and telling them your problems. As a human being, I ask you, where do you place yourself? Thank you very much. I hope I don't need to come back here.
All right, I might need an extra few minutes. Sounders for one four seven Colchester Avenue, I'm a member of the Board of Education. Uh. Where to start? No matter what happens with this budget, fails or passes, it doesn't matter. There's another budget vote that's gonna happen in September. No one seems to know about. The Board of Education is behind by half a million dollars. And as a result, we're going to have another budget that we need to vote on. And my understanding, it's gonna happen around September. So um, that being said, I've been in town, I've lived in town longer than probably ninety-nine percent of the people in this room. I've been here since nineteen seventy-four. I grew up in here. I just, I and my sister went to the, to the high school. I went to final tech. I'm nice, I'm, um, uh, I've been through, I know what the town was like when people mentioned about how, how it was years ago. And yes, it was really bad. When I was in school here, uh, I went to the same math class three years in a row. Sixth, seventh and eighth grade. Same math class. It's not that way anymore. Okay? On the Board of Ed, I know what the school is doing now and it's phenomenal. It's absolutely phenomenal. Um, I don't have to worry about going into the gym locker and getting slammed into the lockers by the other guys. That is, that does not happen anymore. It's fantastic. Um. So the bottom line is the cuts are made by the Board of Education. The, who gets cut gets, is determined by the Board of Education. The Town Council and the Board of Finance only cut the budget, which then forces us to make, and the Board of Ed to make decisions. What to do. This year, unlike past years, because there was a deficit, there was another budget vote coming up that no one's talking about. Everyone's up in arms. The whole town is up in an uproar. And I chastised my superintendent, the superintendent and our finance director for not presenting the details enough that we can defend the budgets we have to the Board of Finance and to the Town Council. So I understand where you're coming from. And I understand where the town is coming from. But like they said, there's three sides to every story. There's uh, one side, the other and the truth. The truth here is the Board of Education, of which I'm a part and I can blame myself for partly. We are not detailed enough to present that information to the public for the finance and Town Council. There's parts of the budget that we are not detailed and I could use I could use some more time.
Good evening, community volunteers. My name is Christina Tamaro Zagan, thirty-four South Main Street, and I am the Chair of the Board of Education. Um, I want to begin by saying that anyone who thinks the Board of Ed can't defend their budget, hasn't been doing their job. There was very detailed information that's been out since January, four months ago, free budget books, line by line items, many open workshops where everyone was welcome to come ask questions. I just want to say that I'm proud of our board. And we have a diverse group of people on our board. Everyone on our board has a voice. It might be ugly sometimes, but at the end of the day, we walk in and out of these chambers having the learners and taxpayers in this district at the forefront of our minds. What happened tonight isn't the democratic process as it was intended to be. Addressing the cheap shots that were made in the River East last week, you bet Superintendent Smith works for the Board of Ed. He follows through on every request we make, which includes the expectation, Ms. Walk, that he communicates frequently and effectively with the busy parents of this district. He was doing his job. Maybe you should have done yours. And trust me when I tell you that I'm sure Superintendent Smith rules the day that he told myself and Mike Buck that we should run for the Board of Education because we are pains in the butts for him. We believe that parents should have a say and opinion in the education that their children receive. That's what we ran on. And as much as we are a pain, we have invested our time in learning. It would be a dereliction of our duty to completely dismiss the CEO of our district, the person who has almost forty years of educational experience. Yet you expect us to completely dismiss his recommendations, recommendations that are not optional but forced now by you. And I leave you with an apology. I am sorry I stood next to five of you two Novembers ago. I'm sorry that you're I'm sorry that your group of town Republicans gaslighted me into believing you supported prudent spending. And I know the word prudent because I designed the flyers that went out to support you to run. Prudent means responsible. It means showing thought and care. This is not responsible. This is dangerous. To remove flippantly the resources of children to serve your own egos is disgraceful. Thank you.
Hello, I'm in, um, thirty-six Easton Bridge Road. Um, I remember, um, reading, um, a letter that, um, Mr. Phil Howard sent to the editor of the River East um, this weekend, and it talked about how there was no, uh, c- cuts in the, uh, education budget. Um, but, um, if you look at how inflation was last year, and if you look at how, um, the, um, budget was last year and to this year, there were some cuts if you do the math, um, because all you have to do is, um, multiply, um, in the inflation percentage by, um, the budget last year, which the infla- inflation was eight point five four percent last year. And you add that together and, um, you can see that it was around, um, one and a half million dollars short. Um, is, um.
If you want to finish, you can come back up, buddy. Do you want to finish? Okay.
I'm Denise Surrers. I didn't think I'd be up here twice. I'm from seventy-seven Barton Hill Road. But I just want to say, I'm not, I don't feel defeated. I feel energized because the five people that voted against sending this back, you've energized me. I'm going to organize and I'm going to make sure that the Board of Education gets what they need and that our students get what they need despite the negativity in the room, because I feel positive that this town will come together and do what it's right, even though you guys can't find yourselves able to do it. Disappointed? Yes, I am. But I'm so energized because I will organize and I see all these people in the room and I can tell that they're here and instead of being home, watching TV, because they feel it's important. And you know what? I'll, I don't watch TV. So I'm a tourist and I'm stubborn and I've never had to tell anybody my side, but there it is. I'm very stubborn and I'm ready to fight. Because this is a shame. There's no excuse. That's unexcusable. I'm disappointed in you, 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 and you, and you. I'm so sorry. Disgusted.
Well, now you get the version without notes. Uh, Mr. Fiegel, you keep getting the line because, uh, people don't think, realize that you, uh, you voted, you voted against sending the budget on. Just want to put that on record. I appreciate that. Um, Mr. Goff, earlier this evening, you said you were against reducing teachers, and yet you voted in favor of reducing teachers. Mr. Phil Howard, you said when, when inflation was negative, we didn't get any money back. Well, inflation hasn't been negative since two thousand and seven, when in two thousand and eight. But when it was lower, which I think what you meant, budget still went ahead and salaries still had to be paid based on contractual obligations. When you say that we wanted to reduce the budget by two point five percent, doesn't sound like very much. But since the, the teacher, uh, the salaries and, and, uh, the benefits constitute eighty-five percent of the budget, if you were to not remove teachers, you would have to take a fifteen percent cut off the operations budget. That's absurd, absurd in an era of six percent, eight percent, eight and a half percent inflation. Absolutely absurd. Ms. Wick, your letter to the editor was shameful and you should resign. That was unacceptable. Your letter to the editor does not identify you as a member of the Town Council. Maybe that was an error on the River East part by not putting that in there. But your letter also indicates that you and you, Ms. Wick, and you, Mr. Goff, and you, Mr. Phil Howard, had already made up your minds going into this meeting tonight. Which is why you didn't pay attention when we all spoke against sending the education budget forward to referendum and asked you to send it back. That's shameful. You shouldn't have done that. When it's going to have results. And now because of your actions tonight, we are unlikely to keep any of those five teachers, even if we beat the education budget, send it back to you, send it back to the Board of Finance to get the funding back for those teacher positions. We're going to have to find new people. Because they started job hunting last week when they got their pink subs, which by law they had to get last week. You failed two weeks ago because you could have fixed it right that moment, sent it back to the Board of Finance. You could have sent it back two weeks ago and you should have. That was your opportunity. Tonight, you could have sent it back and they maybe would have hung around and just put their feelers out and not made any commitments. But after tonight, they're all looking for a new position. And some other school district is going to take them up and they're going to do a great job there. We have lost teachers in this town before because of that, because the same thing happened in two thousand and eighteen. This is shameful and you shouldn't have done it.
Hitty Roman, thirty-six Easton Bridge Road. Um, one of the letters to the editor this weekend caught my attention quite heavily. They accused all the parents and the people that were here of bullying. And I just want to be clear. So I have the definition of bullying here. It says bullying is an ongoing and deliberate misuse of power in relationships through repeated verbal, physical, and or social behavior that intends to cause physical, social, and or psychological harm. It can involve an individual or group misusing their power or perceived power over one or more persons who feel unable to stop it from happening. I'm sorry, if you guys feel that you've been bullied because of a bunch of parents that are passionate about their kids' education, I think you need a redefinition of the word bully. I think what happened tonight, when you're throwing people out of the meeting because they disagree with you, that would be the definition of bullying. Thanks.